Evening, everyone. Um, tonight is January 22nd, 2025, and this is the Groton Board of Education Special Meeting. This is a budget workshop session. It is 6:10. And Mike Whitney's present, Matt Schumann's present, Jen White is present, Andrea, Dr. Andrea Ackerman is present, Dr. Michael Whitney, excuse me, Dr. Beverly Washington, just kidding. Ian Thomas, Adrian Johnson, Dean Antipas, Lori Lapine is present with us tonight, and so is Sam. Thank you, Sam.
And I see Dr. Mancini online, and Ray Engel. And I know Clint was going to be online. Do you see Clint yet?
Not yet.
Where's Jen?
Okay.
Okay. And tonight, we're going to start with secondary education, and then we're going to do Operation CIPs in technology. And I'll turn it over to-
And we'll get through as much as we can get through. I've got quite a few earmarked, and we can start with 5-10, which says art at the top. Lori's here, and she's done a double check with the FTEs, and I know we're getting you a revised FTE sheet coming up here pretty soon, and probably going home with the packet on Friday, right?
That's correct.
And so with the art department, you can see that Groton Middle School has two art teachers, while Fitch High School has four, total of six. We've had that for a long, long time, I think.
Do we project this, or are we not doing that?
Can we project it? I forgot about that thing.
I think it'd be good.
If we sent it to Caitlin. Caitlin, did you get the document that Lori sent you?
No, when did she send it? Oh, just now. Okay, let me download it.
And if you download it, we're going to start with 5:10.
Okay.
Page 5:10. So, um, you know, there's certainly the narrative that talks about the models that we have, six through eight, and that the, these are electives, and, you know, the arts are really important, access to the arts are actually accounted for in the, in the state reporting, and that's really important to have that for our kids. And we also want to look at the budget portion, which is on 5:11. And if you can see, the entire budget is down by .3 percent. But when you look at the total salaries, there's, they are only a .1 percent, and I think the only attribution, attribute for that is that we did have a retirement of a very experienced middle school teacher, I think it was even last year, so between one year and another, we had hired a newer staff member, so that might show us the reason for that.
Susan?
Yeah?
Lori, possibly share it, because I'm streaming and hosting on this computer, it keeps freezing, because I have so much open right now.
If you send it to me, I'd be more than happy to share it.
Can you share it?
Yeah, sure.
Doesn't it take a long time, though?
Send it to Ian.
Yeah, if you send it to me, I can, I can run the screen. I'm fine.
Thank you.
I just don't know how fast it's going to transfer. It took us a long time to send it to you, so.
So can I ask a question while we're waiting for it to be posted?
Sure.
There is one item on that, just going to say it since it's not yet put up on the screen, substitute teachers. We had $2,500 in the current budget, and it's a zero-
What page are you on?
Page 11, 5:11.
Oh, okay.
5:11, line 120, with a zero budget for this year. And I noticed that as I went through this section, for many of the different function codes, there is a zero figure for this year's budget. Now, I want to believe that everybody's taking their vitamin C, and we're not going to have any absences.
I think substitutes are, where would the full substitute line be, instead of pulling it out in each function, Lori? Do you know?
I don't know. I would suspect it's an lump sum, but we can-
It's an lump sum. We'll check it.
That's what they put it in.
It's a good question. It's probably the way they did it before.
Was there a reason that we, that we're consolidating that on the line, as opposed to doing it the way we did it before?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't build the documents, so I don't know exactly where they put it, but I can certainly, we can certainly find out where it is.
We can research it.
So, in the past, in the past, you put it each section?
It, yeah, it looks like it, and then, and then they put it all together for the whole district. It might even be the way that we've budgeted for it, because now we have building subs that are full-time in the building, and so we use them as people, you know, so to account for when people in different departments are absent. That might be a little trickier to keep track of.
Could we, could we at least consider for next year, that we at least do it by elementary, middle, and high school, so we can see where we're having challenges in absenteeism?
Yeah, we could probably do it that way. I will find out.
Okay, thank you.
If it's not already being done that way.
No, I'm sorry, thank you. I was going to suggest that maybe allocating the subs by department, art, music, et cetera, that that would be sort of a fiction, because we really don't know.
Yeah.
I think my, my impression, at least from when I went to schools, that subs were deployed wherever they had to go, whether they were competent in the subject matter or not, you know, they did the best they could to be with the class that day. That's just a guess, though.
Sometimes they're in multiple classes in a day. Adrian?
Yeah, I was just going to point out, I think we went over this yesterday, that subs, the substitute number was 344,000 last year. It went up to 950 in elementary, so I'm kind of wondering if we just took it that way, by school rather than-
Or by level. It might be group just-
Or not by school, yeah, but elementary, middle, and high school. Maybe that's why that number increases.
If we could see that going forward.
We'll find it.
Thank you.
Yeah, you brought it to our attention, so you helped us find the problem. Now we'll, we'll figure out where it is.
So, this document is not paginated, the electronic one?
No, it should be pa, it was paginated when we put it in, scanned it in.
Okay.
There, is it over in the corner, and you can't see it?
Oh, maybe so. I had this.
Maybe you can, yeah.
It's on the lower right on odd, but the upper right on even.
That's on the right-hand side, Ian, I think you just make it a little smaller.
I'm not seeing it, but-
Okay, can we move on, Susan?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you see the cost for the teachers. There is a slight increase for the salaries and wages. You see the group insurance, which it seems to be down, but we, remember, we redistributed that to make it, you know, kind of accurate. It was, we had that lump sum in the admin, which was, you know, needed to be corrected yesterday. Of course, you've got workman's comp, social security, Medicare, repair of equipment, and there's nothing, you know, it's $500, I always think of the kiln, you know, in an art room needing equipment fix. You have a little bit of some travel for field trip, so they must be planning something. And you have arts and craft supplies, which probably are the bulk of any art teacher's curriculum. And then replacement of instructional equipment, you know, amount for that. And then you've got the total budget of $641,797, and it's down .3 percent.
Any questions on this page? Okay, moving forward.
The next is computer education, and there's only one person at Groton Middle School who's got that certification and is teaching that particular course. So, there are computers in all our schools, and there's other kind of tech courses, lots of different coding courses and things, but this one has that certification and is teaching that at the middle school. And that total is really the salary of $66,639. It's a newer teacher that I know and saw today. So, and then, of course, there's, I guess, social security and Medicare.
So, would you consider asking Clint if, as we're beginning to look at possibly considering how AI can be used by admin, by teachers, and appropriately by students, whether we're going to need to strengthen our computer teaching staff going forward? Again, this is blue sky for this year, but-
We have other teachers who do computer-type courses, but Lori, do you want to explain any further about the certification that would call it a computer teacher, that we only would have one? Because we have other technology courses in project league by way.
Right, if it's by level. So, for example, at the elementary level, you don't need to hold a computer ed certification, whereas in the upper grades you do, so.
Okay, any questions on 5:13? All right, moving forward.
Oh, I do. This is computer education?
Yep.
I can hear you.
Is, so you're talking about still this account, computer education? I was wondering what, um, why is there, I was trying to understand, in the narrative part of the table, it's one for adopted, one for actual, one for proposed, but then I look in the, the numbers, you've got like 58 or 59,000 or something for actual, zero for FY '25 budget, and then it comes up to 65. I don't know why there's a zero there that didn't, I don't know how we had a, how we had a certified teacher that wasn't here in there. That's what I was trying to figure out, from last year's budget.
Do you know that answer, Lori? We'd have to find out.
Here, this should be-
I don't know if there was a-
It should be a salary in-
Huh?
It could just be how they were allocated last year.
Yeah, could be, yeah, could be allocated in a different way. They didn't have just the computer designation. I'll find out, though. And then language arts, you see that in '25, we actually had 10 Groton Middle School. We had 13 at Fitch High School, and that's probably based on enrollment, and it's still 23, so our total is still accurate, but probably our needs shifted from the adopted to the actual. And then same thing for this year, proposed is 10, and in middle school, and 13 at Fitch High School. And so it's the same 23 numbers, so we haven't changed FTEs at all. So, when you look at our certified teacher staff, you see that the, it's decreased. Again, we've had teachers retire and new teachers come on board, so that it's a less fee, even with contracts and steps. It looks like we have guidance in there. Do we know why guidance was put in there, Lori, at 113?
Where, what are you looking at?
I'm looking at 5:15, 104.
Yeah.
It has guidance. So why is guidance in the language arts department?
Oh, I, I don't have it. They need to, I think there's a correction that's needed, a teacher went from ELA to guidance.
Oh, that's right.
They did reclassify it here.
Yeah.
So I will make a note.
So, but she's accounted for here.
Yeah, she's accounted for.
Yeah.
But it's just where they allocated her.
Okay.
So it's a-
So it's a high school teacher who had both, who is double Ecert. She actually started out as a guidance counselor, went to teach ELA, and she's back with kids doing guidance, and she's phenomenal.
And it, my guess is they hadn't, they haven't moved her.
Yeah.
We'll get, we'll-
We will.
So her salary actually, we, should be on the 101 line?
104 is accurate, right?
Guidance.
But just in a different, in a different function.
It should just be moved to guidance.
Correct.
So she's a guidance counselor now?
Yeah, she's now a guidance counselor, yeah.
Oh, okay, so that should be removed from there, okay.
And I think I remember seeing in guidance, when we could get to it, it was down one.
Yeah, and that's where it is.
So, I did have a question for you, Susan. We went, we dropped 2.1 from Fitch. I'm curious, is that because we had a smaller, have a smaller class this coming year? Is it because, what's, what's the driver of that change?
It was an enrollment issue. So it was just based on enrollment. Remember when I told you that there could be some cost benefits to doing the Power School PD, so the scheduling for all administrators? So they've had this for a couple of years, they're doing it again, and with that, we're able to fill those classrooms better, 20 to 22, and instead of having small classes, big classes, and so that's really work to help with our FTEs. And we've been able to really carve out some of the FTEs at the high school because of that. Let's see, where was I? The subs, you know, we're no longer, it looks like, doing it in each function. We're doing it, it looks like in a, in a sectional way for levels. You see the group insurance and the workman's comp, social security, Medicare, and that was all taken care of and adjusted. You see travel for field trips, and there's a little money there. You see classroom supplies, not much money there. Some software that they use, some textbooks, workbooks, and it looks like periodicals for students, and their total budget is up about 6.3 percent. The largest thing we see is they probably not, you know, they've doubled the, the number, number of field trips, so they've doubled the field trip costs, so they, and we can find out what that's all about, but I know that they did go to see the Great Debate, and we have a debate course in, at Fitch High School that's very popular, and, and a debate club, and so that's like a phenomenal experience for kids.
Does this line, 5:88, not just for this particular function code, does that include all the expenses?
Yes.
All the expenses, the busing?
Yeah.
The admissions, everything's included?
Yeah, travel for, yeah, field trips, yeah.
Okay. Great.
Michael?
Yeah, I'm just going back to function 1103, computer education. I checked in last year's approved budget, adopted budget, rather, and that, that function doesn't show up. It just goes from-
They've added it then.
Yeah, and so I think what happened is if this person's new, came in with a cert, and then that puts them in this, this function code by the state, and now it shows up.
Yeah, that's probably exactly right.
And so, so the only, I think the only correction that needs to be made is on that page where it's talking about the FTE charts, the, oh, it's kind of weird, the adopted budget needs to say 00 for the total in the Groton Middle. But actually, I just noticed it's, it's odd.
It does say.
On that page, it says FY 2018 to 2019, 2019 to 2020. Oh, maybe they corrected it? I'm looking at the old one. Which one is this?
It looks like he's got, he has a typo with the year on that page.
Yeah.
Probably because they brought the function code back, it may not have been used a while.
Yeah, that's exactly what they did.
So that first column should be zeros, change the years, and, and then, I don't think we want to dare make this change, but I just noticed that on these charts, it goes adopted, actual, proposed. Then you get to the numbers, and it's, I think it's actual, adopted, proposed. It flips the order of the first two columns. I don't think we dare make that change, but it is, it gets a little-
Yeah, when you're looking at the numbers, though, I kind of like to see what we actually spent in '24, before we go to the '25. It's kind of organized, I think, better when you're looking at numbers. I don't know.
Yeah, so it's like, but it's kind of having it both ways.
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't mess with it.
No, no. And I wouldn't want to reverse any order, yeah.
You all set, Michael?
I am, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dean has a question.
I wasn't thinking about this before, well, I kind of was, but now somebody else already broke the ice. So, so, yeah, I mean, on the, on the dollar pages, we've got three years.
Are you on 5:15?
Any of these pages.
Okay.
We've got three years, fiscal year ending '24, '25, and then projected for '26.
Mm-hmm.
That's not a typo, right?
No.
We mean to have the three years there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, that's the trending that we've been doing, and they even went back even further to trend.
So it's a bit different. It's already different. Yeah, so it's apples and oranges.
Yeah, yeah.
Well-known phrase.
It helped us, we feel it helped us to make a better decision than we've made.
Yeah, no, it's useful.
Yeah, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure that, so you can't actually match this with, with this. Yeah, I didn't actually make the link until now.
Right.
Any questions on this page? Okay, next.
And world language, this is for six through 12. There are five world language teachers at Groton Middle, and eight point three were adopt, five and eight point three were adopted, but actually, we were able to work with five and seven point one, again because of the Power School scheduler. So there were 12.1 that we actually had for '25 this year, and then next year, we're proposing the very same. And the change is probably the minus 1.2 is what we had adopted to what we actually have for the change from one year to the next. So, go on.
Go ahead.
No, then-
I was, I was going to ask, on the, on the FTE schedule, it says 101 and 119, but I don't see 119 appearing down below, so that 119 is just a stray? Or is I making reference to something not shown on the sheet? I'm looking at page 516, it says 101 and 119 certified teachers, it lists them all. So that 119 reference is a, just a stray?
I don't know why that would be there.
I'm not seeing what, where, I'm not seeing what-
He's on 516. 101 is the certified teacher.
And it says 119.
Unless 119 was something that used to be district-wide, Lori, do you know?
I'll double-check, but I believe-
Because there's another column that had zero down at the bottom for district-wide.
Yeah, it, it's likely there was something in those codes at some point.
Right. So it's a ghost or a relic or-
Yeah, it could be, there's no law for any.
Something just like that.
That's what we'll blame.
Okay.
And you know that we have both a French teacher and a Spanish teacher in elementary. It's covered by a DODIA world language grant, and they are district-wide folks, but they're paid for by a grant. But they get into all the elementary schools, grade three, four, and five, to give them a carousel experience. So by the time they go to the middle school, they're taking the Level One course, and that is hopefully one of the contributors to some of these sales of biliteracy. And what's the question?
And Jen?
Go ahead. Just a quick, I know we had discussion throughout the year that, um-
Jen, to talk to them.
Oh, I know we had, we had discussions throughout the year that we weren't having Latin classes, so I, I was just a little confused about the note that we have. Granted, it's just .1, but what is that individual doing if we don't have any?
So, we do have a teacher who teaches social studies currently, but she had been the Latin teacher. She has done some online courses and some individual for kids who had been in a Latin program. This year, I don't think it's happening, I just don't think we took it out, though.
Okay, thank you.
But I will double-check on that to make sure that I'm saying that right. So here again, we're down $18,000 for this department at 1.3 percent decline, and you see what the teacher salaries are. It's also a decrease because we had carved back 1.2 FTEs, you know, you saw in, in the top of the chart. And you see the, the insurances that are provided, also a decrease probably because of the personnel. And there is a field trip, so kids are still getting field trips at middle school and high school, you'll be glad to know. And there's classroom supplies, not too much, pupil tests, because they do do the, the test for the seal of biliteracy. So we do test them in certain grades, and that's required by the DOD grant, but it also helps us in getting kids prepared for that seal. And then you have computer, some computer software that they have, some textbooks that they have, not much, and some workbooks. So, you know, which gives you the 1.375 to $57 million budget.
Susan, if you're down one teacher, how come there's only a decrease in $9,000? Am I reading that wrong?
Steps, probably.
Yeah, there's steps. So it, you're down $12,000, so that's not the whole salary, but you remember, everybody else is getting a raise in steps.
Oh, okay.
So it's just the difference between, yeah.
Average of 9 percent.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions on this page for Susan? Michael?
I just wanted to know the breakdown while starting at Fitch for ASL Spanish and French. I'm guessing now we're maybe down to one French teacher?
We only have one French teacher at the high school and one French teacher at the middle school.
Okay.
Yeah, and they, they teach a lot, you know, they teach full-time, they've got full caseloads, but you, you definitely see that Spanish is kind of a preferred course, and we also have Spanish for the Spanish speakers, so a lot of our native-speaking Spanish students come in. They sometimes, even children who come speak any language, we test them for the seal of biliteracy, and sometimes they just get the seal of biliteracy right away, which is wonderful, and then they take another language, so they sometimes are trilingual.
And then ASL, I think, is only at the high school with one teacher.
ASL is, actually, there's two that kind of, they're, they're both the teachers of the hearing impaired, and they also are sign language, ASL-trained teachers, so they, they complement one another, and they share caseloads for special ed and also for the high school.
Do, do they show up as one full-time equivalent in this function code because of the, the shared, or, it doesn't, maybe it's, I'll just say one or two.
Yeah, I, I, it's not going to be, it's probably full-time between the two of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a very popular course, too.
And then, so is Spanish, I mean, is it something, I'm trying to get up to like kind of roughly 12. I've got three, so nine left. Do you know this, that, is all, all those Spanish?
So I know we have at least four Spanish teachers at the middle school.
Nine Spanish?
Nine.
Sorry, nine Spanish between middle school, high school.
And so is it kind of like four and five, or four, four at middle?
Four at middle, five at the high school. That's correct.
Okay. And so, so I know there's more interest in Spanish, and I can understand that. I remember from a few years ago, there was that world language survey, and one of the things that came up a lot was, I, I remember American Sign Language, very popular, it remains that way, but also, I think it was maybe Chinese or actually maybe Japanese.
Yeah, there were some, yeah.
One of the two, or both.
Right.
And I know those are hard languages, maybe to staff at this point with teachers, but-
Well, we've talked to LEAR, because LEAR is our regional resk.
Yeah.
They've talked about possibly providing some kind of a course that could be shared regionally, that kids could sign up for, and we could all contribute. But finding a teacher, I was in Stanford, where they had teachers who, you know, were Chinese-speaking teachers in the middle school and high schools. They had like a plethora of different languages. It was like really an amazing district, and, but it was very hard to get them and to keep them, and they would pay for even their living expenses, so it was an extra expense, but it was really sought after. So, but if we could do it regionally and provide more languages, that's the way to go.
Yeah, I agree, because it's a very Eurocentric view of the world.
Yeah, it is, isn't it? Yeah.
From a couple centuries ago, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to see us expand where a lot of the world population is.
You're right, you're right. I, I hear you. So I'll keep talking to Kate about that.
Thanks.
One more thing, I'm, I'm looking at Lori, I may be the wrong person to look at, but I don't know who else to look at, so I'll look at you. Where there are graphics we can add, like a little chart that says high school, middle school, number of teachers, et cetera, where it's not onerous to provide, those things really make a pretty dry list of numbers intelligible to our folks who are even less familiar with it than we are.
So-
We have to make our budget intelligible not only to financial people, but to our general public.
So we do have the numbers at each of the levels. Are you saying break it out more, or is there something else in the narrative you felt would help?
Well, there, here, we, there's nothing that indicates what languages are taught, how many lang, how many teachers we have for that, or am I missing something?
No, there, it's in the narrative. We, we spell that out.
So Susan?
I don't see it. It says, it shows the French teacher moved and the Latin teacher, but the rest is the world language is offered, grade six through eight. Just a little box that-
He wants to have, like, at the high school, there's five Spanish teachers, and at the middle school, there's four Spanish teachers.
Okay.
At the middle school, there's one French teacher, and high school, there's one French teacher.
So I, again, I realize you have a little bit of work on your plate.
A little.
This needn't be this year, but this is so easy to attain when we do it next year.
Okay, thank you.
Adrian?
I, I'm just going to say, I've said this before, but ASL is very popular among parents and students. We haven't really grown that program a long time. That language study that Mike referred to that did show that it was very popular. And we offer, it looks like up to level five for French and Spanish in ASL. I believe we're going up to level four, but it's really only offered, and this is from when my daughter signed up for it last year in eighth grade. They told all the eighth graders they couldn't sign up for ASL. So I believe that just because there's too much demand, that they don't want ninth graders in ASL.
Well, and I think there's also, there was a scheduling issue, too, because probably of the number of teachers. And, you know, what they also had to teach. They also had to do, you know, they were hired also to be teachers of the deaf and, you know, probably didn't have the extra.
Oh, no, I, I think it's amazing how many classes are run considering how many kids are in ASL with really one FTE. So it's just, I saw that was on the wish list for the high school to add a .5 FTE for ASL. That might help make it so that you can get to that level four ASL that they just added. And it's just much, it's very popular. I think it was over half the kids wanted ASL. And where, as compared to French, which we offer, is only something like 30% or something. That being said, that's just a little aside plug for ASL. 12.1, counting up two French teachers, one ASL FTE, nine Spanish. That gets me to, oh, never mind, sorry, did math wrong again. That was it.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. What happened with pupil tests that they went up 3,000?
So that is for the seal of biliteracy, so we have to assess, we have to assess the students because of the DOD grant. But also to, one of the requirements is to look to grow the seals of biliteracy. So they use this Apple test. So they test the kids, I think, beginning of the year or at the end of the year. And they actually have to speak into the computer and be fluent in the language and be able to have conversation. So it's really interesting to see their growth over time.
That's new?
That's been a couple of years, I think. We've had it for a couple of years. Anything else about that one?
Yeah.
Michael?
I just got one more. Actually, let's look at the, I still have last year's adopted budget. And I was just looking at the world language. And its table looks the same except for the year numbers. So it goes from like 2023, 24 adopted was 13.3, then it goes to 12.1. And that's 12.1 and it's minus 1.2. So, and it has, it has in it one FTE French teacher moved from the highest to elementary. So I think that's relic. But there's something.
Yeah, I think that just was, I think there were some updates that, you know, just needed to be shifted in this narrative.
Yeah, I think, I think the, my guess is the adopted column, that first column in the FTE table, it should just say 5, 7.1, 12.1. And so that there's actually no, there's no change in staffing. That's my guess, just looking at last year's approved, which we're currently in and in this.
Thank you. So culinary arts, that's another popular class. And we have been able to increase numbers because we have offering of the first culinary opportunity to be a semester class instead of a full year. So you get twice as many kids to be able to have that opportunity, which is really good. And then as they move through, they get further experiences. I think they've even served at the Martin Luther King. The, you know, special celebration that you had this past weekend. Ernie was there, too, but.
Ernie and, I think it was, it was not a high school student.
Okay, all right. They have done that, though.
Yes, they have, yes.
They do serve and, yeah, produce the food, so. And then if you look at it, that's up by .2%. You see that the salaries are up 2.6, and that's by contract. We can see what the insurance is for this group, workman's comp, Medicare, total benefits at 4.1. Repair of equipment, which they probably need a lot because it looks like a harvest gold kitchen from the 70s that I remember. And, let's see. We have travel for field trips, so they're going somewhere, too. And pupil assessments, I don't know the answer to that, but they must have some kind of an assessment, whether they get a certificate in that or not. I can find out. And then some consumer science supplies, which, you know, I think in '24, they actually spent 5,000. They budgeted 20,000 this year, so it'll be interesting to see what they actually spend this year. And then we're budgeting 15,000 for next year.
Maybe they have to take that, say, test.
That might be it, yeah. I bet that's it, too. Thank you.
Any questions on this page? Okay, next page.
And they do more than biscuits and pancakes these days. I just want to tell. And those, when they do the cupcake wars, that's really fun. Okay, technology education. And here we have, at the middle school, actually five at the middle school and two at the high school. Total of seven, so we're up by .5. And it talks about the many enrichment courses that we have in STEM, computer science, broadcasting design, and Project Lead the Way, drafting, manufacturing at the high school, animation. So, you know, I'd love to take you guys for a walk-through sometime and check out the manufacturing center we want and see some of the things, the cool things the kids are doing in there.
Why did you have to add a teacher? Because adopted was four and then actual is five in the middle school?
Probably, it was a scheduling problem.
It's the URI teacher, that's out on.
Oh, but we're not, we're paying for them, but we have to have a substitute for them? You want to explain that?
Yeah, so we have a teacher on assignment at URI through a Navy STEM program. So it's up one because he's in our budget, but they fully reimburse us for all his salary and benefits. So he's fully paid for by URI under a grant program. So they pass that back to us.
Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
Can I?
Oh, yes, it says on the bottom. Bye, Matthew.
Thank you. I have no problem at all in supporting this for the budget, but I think we need a board discussion to, sooner, I mean, after the budget has gone through, but very soon, to discuss, shape our emerging future with regard to ed technology. We're, at this moment, we're at least aspirational, if not further along on the path to actually, hopefully, having a manufacturing technology center. And we need to discuss space, we need to discuss funding, we need to discuss whether this should be a core instructional area for career pathways. I would argue it should, but that's not the discussion for tonight. But could we put this on a cow after the budget is passed? Thanks.
So when we go down to the budget, it's up 2.2% in this function. And certified teachers actually looks like a decrease of $164,775. I, I don't know, Lori, am I out of whack thinking that it's because we've had some retirements and we?
It would be the reimbursement that we're getting.
Oh, that's, okay, but it wouldn't, that wouldn't be for one teacher?
No, it's.
But a combination of?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, so.
Adrian, I'm sorry.
So looking at last year's budget, it looks like we have, it went from eight in '24 to 11 in '25. But here it says 25 actual, six and a half?
Yeah, this, this is, so that budget number 101, it goes from 451 up to 703, then now down to 538. That 703 is reflective of 11 positions. That's consistent with what's in the approved budget from last year. So what happened, I'm pretty sure, is in this FTE chart, that first column is the adopted from 24, or 23, 24, where it should be 8, 3, 11. It says 4, 2.5, 6.5. I don't know what the actual is. But, so, so there's, there's a problem in this chart. Those numbers in blue or in the gray, that 703, are reflective of 11 positions.
Which we don't have.
I don't know if we have it.
Do we know how many?
Funds for.
Positions we, yeah, it says in the, in last year's budget, it says proposed 11.0 for '24, '25.
Well, Lori knows who they are. I mean, she can cross-reference that. She knows exactly who the staff are.
Yeah, we'll have to check that.
Yeah.
But I think what's happening, I didn't know all these before, but I think a lot of these columns are just old. They're from last year, not, not in the numbers, but in the chart. But it's, we should know, we should be able to know what the actual is, because if it's different between 11 and 7, that's pretty big.
Well, I think we've been using what we actually have this year and the staff that we know we have and what we'll need for next year in doing all the cross-referencing. So we can do that once again. And it looks like we've added that computer, so there could have been other things that were added that they felt that that was closer to the certification.
That'd be one.
It's just one for that, that we found.
We definitely have seven.
Only seven? So we funded 11, and then we've got the one that probably moved to that new function code that showed up. So that's A, so now we still have, I guess, three left.
Yes, we can find where those are and see, you know, where, where they're being reclassified or have they gone away? So we'll verify that.
Were these like part of that four, that issue of fours, the people from before with that weird budget line that we were talking about months ago?
Misclassification?
Yeah.
We can look there.
No, I don't think it was that, but I will double check, yeah.
You set, Mike?
Thank you.
So Jen has a question.
So, how long is that individual going to be? How mu, how many months or how long is that individual going to be at URI? Like, is it prudent to have like the lower salary number for certified teachers if the individual's coming back? So we're like reducing it by some portion of that 164?
Yeah, so their, their grant funding, our understanding, ends this year. So the teacher would return, which would then impact a teacher that we have, so.
So wouldn't it increase?
Well, because we've always included him in the budget, so it'll go down.
Okay. For next year?
Correct.
Is he part of the grant for next year?
Teacher when he returns.
Oh, because you have another teacher?
Yeah.
Got it.
Doing his job.
Okay, thank you.
Adrian?
So this is just to add to the confusion, but in the actual FY '25 budget, it says 803,710 for certified teachers, you know, 101. And here, in the current budget, it says 703,484. So there's also $100,000 difference between what we're currently operating under and what it says we're currently operating under in the, in the one that's just printed.
But it also says that the actual for '23, '24 were 451.
Yeah, which is about right. It says 420, in last year's budget that came out, it says 429, 63 estimated. So we're pretty close to that. But this one, it's, there's a $100,000 difference between what it says FY '25 budget is and the actual FY '25 budget and what it says in this document.
Did that have anything to do with getting that reimbursement from URI, maybe? I don't know.
We'll have to.
Yeah, we have to see what that is.
I think they've got to match that, like what Adrian has, this column has to match that, that gray column, because it's adopted, adopted.
And to be clear, just to, Adrian, the book that you're looking at for the FY '25 budget, that's, that was the final version, right? That's the 7.9%?
Yeah, this is the one we got after we approved it. So this is dated February 28th, but I think we actually got it.
Okay.
This is the version John Burke got.
Right, that's the final, final.
It's also what's online. I've got, I pulled it up on our website.
Any other questions on this page?
Yes, could we, the $157,000 for computer software, could you share with us what that is?
If I knew, I don't know, is Clint online yet? He was going to be calling in.
Not on yet. I just texted him, though.
Okay. Although I don't know that he would know necessarily, because it's done through the school, but he may know. We can find out.
Thank you.
I was wondering about the same item. It is quite large, and it was zero before. I was wondering if this was put in because we used to use DOD supplemental. I thought, wondered if this is what he was talking about.
For the software, you mean?
Yeah, if it was part of that.
Could be. I know that with the Project Lead the Way and certain other courses, you know, they also have some broadcasting courses that require that. So, you know, I just have to find out for sure. I'm not going to guess about it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I think, I think you said last night that we used to, or maybe a different meeting, we used to put about half a million in from DOD supplemental and directly into tech. I'm wrestling with the thought that that DOD supplemental is a grant that has sunsetted, or at least we're not getting anymore.
Not this year.
Not this year.
We're not, we don't, we don't, hopefully it won't sunset, and we will have those numbers again, but for, for, well, actually for last year, because we're always a year lagging behind.
But what I'm asking, I guess, is shouldn't we be treating this like we do with other grants when the grant goes away? The dollars do, too? I mean.
Well, the dollars do, but we have used those dollars almost to supplement what we could have or should have had in the budget, because there are requirements that we need to have to run our courses, whether it's software or whether it's, you know, the hardware that kids are using, you know. I mean, it would cause us to go from a one-to-one district where a child has a Chromebook, starting in sixth grade all the way through 12th grade, and takes it home and has that access to technology. So I don't know. That would be a lot to, to switch over.
It is, it's true, but I guess in identifying possible places of cut, I thought, you know, we don't have the grant funding now, so now it has to go into this budget, but we could ramp up to that rather than just going 100% in. Because, because this is one line and it's 150 or 160,000, but there are others that come up. It is probably at least half a million. I'm going to bookmark it as, as a.
As a possibility.
But you need to know that computer software acts like a curriculum source and a textbook and all of that. So it would change what we're doing in the school, so.
Any other questions?
Susan, Susan, I just want to interrupt real quick. The certified teacher line for 20, for '25 is correct. While, while you were, while everybody was discussing this, that was the number that was pushed over after the town approved budget in mid-June. So this is, this is the number that was actually entered in, that 703,484, just, just for everybody's identification.
So that is the correct number?
Yes, it is.
It was, could I say that again? It was pushed over from where?
That was entered and uploaded when the budget was approved by the town, because we couldn't, we could not move any budget numbers into the, into fiscal year '24, '25 until it was approved by the town. And that number was not approved until June 20th, somewhere right around there. So this is the number that was, that I inherited, that we all pushed in, because those were the numbers that were officially given to me to enter into the system. So I know, I heard someone mention that in February of last year, the number was different. Well, it may have, it may have been different, but the final number that was in the approved budget that came, that was uploaded into e-financed is that 703,484.
Amy, do you have something to say?
Yes, thank you. I have some, Clint and I worked together on some of the computer software because obviously the technology piece and the instructional piece go hand in hand. And so if you want some examples of some of the instructional software, I can give you some examples specifically. You know, that might kind of help, you know, illustrate some, some points. So, you know, Susan was saying about, you know, some pieces being really tied to the curriculum. For example, Amplify or specifically our DIBELS and how we measure student progress and, one of the ways that we measure student progress in reading. That is a part of the instructional software. DreamBox, one of our mathematics programs, that's paid for in this line item. Our Hagerty phonemic awareness. Our Hegarty phonemic awareness for preschool and pre-K is incorporated in, I believe, this line item. Alexia Power Up Literacy, which I believe we use with our special education students as well as some of our students in tier three, needing tier three literacy support. Learning Without Tears, we use in TK kindergarten and grade one. Mystery Science, we use in grades K through five. Pebble Go, I believe we use in our library media centers. And World Book is another resource we use in our library media centers. So those are a list of the instructional software. Again, I believe this goes in the 612 line item, so.
So it's with 612, but it wouldn't be in this function, which is 6 through 12, but that's a great example of other softwares that definitely are connected to our curriculum, more in the elementary level. But I, you know, we can find out maybe from Clint or maybe from Peter. You know, Peter and, it's for both middle school and high school, Peter and Matt, what they're using specifically.
So you're saying what Anne Marie just gave us is not on this?
It's not on this function, but it's in this number of software 612. There are other things that she was giving as examples of how it's connected, but in other, you know, areas like literacy and math and. Adrian?
Yeah, I'd just like to go back to what Ray said about this 703,484 being put into this budget. As far as I remember, the Board of Ed votes on a budget, which is one on my left side here, that went to the town as a 7.91% increase and we got a 7.91% increase. So we got this budget. As it, as history shows, it's just nurses were not covered in our budget because we don't have to go into all that. But this is what the Board of Ed approved and I would love to know when the Board of Ed voted to amend that budget to this, you know, this 100,000 in this category. But now I'm kind of wondering if there's any other changes that were made to the Board of Ed approved budget that ended up being the budget that we're operating under. So I would really like to understand the, you know, how the process works from that side if numbers were changed. And I would like to know all of the numbers that were changed from this document, if they're, if they have been changed from the approved budget, from the board approved budget. So somebody please correct me if I'm incorrect in my understanding there.
I was wondering, Ray, if that June version that was approved by the town was the total, that 87,958,484?
That was the total, it was uploaded.
Okay. So that total's correct, then it's, this is a question of redistributing?
Yes.
Yeah.
If the allocations were changed from the original, I would not know. You have to remember, I started, I think, like a week and a half, two weeks before we had to, before that budget was approved by the town. So if any changes were made prior to that, I don't have any idea what was done in the past. We had to rush to get it loaded, that much I do know. I also know that when it loaded, the load failed, we had to manually input almost every line. So it was, it was a challenge, let's put it that way.
Any other questions or comments?
Was there anything else on here that you had questions about in the budget itself of technology, Ed?
More just an observation. I mean, last night I mentioned the idea of having like a secondary level of breakout for these, these codes. Because as you just identified, the computer software that Anne Marie explained about would not be in this high school technology education. However, those are good examples of software that we do use on different levels. So like this 612 will show up in different areas throughout the budget, wherever software is.
Yep, yep.
So having like a.
We can get you the list.
Yeah, having like a secondary, like, you know, tier of like what exactly this software is going to be used for, you know, would be beneficial, like a drop-down menu of like boop, okay, so there's like four or five pieces of software that were identified for this.
Once I get a business manager, maybe that's something we can contemplate for next year, but in the meantime, I can get you that list.
Okay, yeah, appreciate it.
So I can get you what we're doing with it, so.
Okay, on to 522.
So again, we, this was one of the FTEs, remember, we did take four FTEs, I think, from the high school last year, so there was a reduction of one from the 24 to the 25. And, and then for 26, it's going to be consistently the 19.5. And you see how it's broken down, 9.5 at the middle school and 10 at the high school. And certified teachers' salaries and wages went down 10.4%. You know, you don't even see any increases for steps or anything because of that, you know, losing that one FTE. So that's what brought it down that way. And then I think there were a couple retirements, actually I know there were, like three or four retirements of very experienced math teachers at both the middle school and the high school, replaced by newer teachers. So there are always cost savings with that. And you see the insurances amounting to about 35.3%. Field trips even in mathematics, I love it, and math supplies, not a real huge lift. Some textbooks and those, you know, they can be replacement textbooks or maybe additional textbooks that they need in a course, but anytime there would be a new textbook requested, it would have to come through curriculum committee. And then you have professional materials. We have replacement of instructional equipment and that's probably calculators and things. And you also have a budget in this department that's gone down 2.8% or $62,256.
Matthew?
I have two questions. The first one is we have a reduction in staff at Fitch of one and a half FTEs. So my question is, given.
No, just one. Oh, they, it's, that's because of scheduling. You mean the original 11.5 down to 10?
That's correct.
Okay.
Given our SAT score results, I'm really curious as to what's the driver of the reduction in FTE. I would think we would want to add.
It's enrollment. It's, it's that we've been able to, the classes are, you know, scheduled at about, some are 17, 18, some are 20, 22, but they're just, their average class sizes are more appropriate. There were some times that we would have classes of five, six and, you know, and then classes of 22.
It's a conundrum for me because I understand the need to, to balance class size, but I also understand the need to focus on student outcomes. And if we can reduce the class, if we can concentrate the students and reduce the number of classes we have, one way we can function is what we did is to reduce staff. The other way we can function is to say, we have the staff person who we can really target at a crying need that we have. So I don't want us to be prisoners of the spreadsheet. I want us to really continue to function on student outcomes. And for someone who loves math, I'm sure you want to see us do better.
I do, but we had a very tight budget and that was necessary for last year. It's already happened. They still do have task classes and we still do get support. So it's still built in to have support for kids.
Well, I hope.
So they haven't lost that. Although we have lost some tutors, we had the high dose tutoring. So that's something that I think was also on the list for the high school was tutors, so.
I'm hopeful that we're, our outcomes will be better this spring.
I hope so, too.
My second question is, a second conundrum on line 201, group insurance professional. Here we have a 42% increase with 5% less staff, but if you look at many of the other pages we've seen, the group insurance figure has dropped. So why is this an anomaly where I hear the group insurance is jumping very high and in other pages it's dropping?
It's related to the people and the services that they're receiving and, and what it affords, whether there are families, more families, so.
This is salaries and wages.
Oh, I thought you were saying group insurance.
I'm sorry, group insurance.
You said group insurance.
But isn't, aren't that, isn't that the group insurance that's paid for by our staff, partially by our staff and partially by us? If we have fewer sal, if we have 5% less employees, that's what the one person is roughly, I think, yeah. We went from 20 and a half to 19 and a half or 20, you know, on the year to year. So that's roughly a 5% drop in employment. We have some offsetting steps, I grant that, but a 42% increase, I don't know what it is, Laurie, but would you take, would you take a look at that later?
I'll clarify with them how they do the allocation.
Okay. Adrian?
Thank you.
Are you finished, Ryan?
I'm finished, thank you.
Just for everybody's edification, on healthcare insurance, you could have 20 people in a department and have a big drop in your healthcare insurance because nobody may take it. You may also have a huge increase such as this because out of the 19 people, 19 of them may be on a family plan, which is about, what, 30, $30,000 per, per person that's hired here.
That's what I was thinking.
Right, so that even if they pay their 20%, if last year only 10 of them took the insurance, this year you have 20 of them taking insurance or 19, you're going to see a huge increase. So that, I mean, it's worth investigating, it's a logical question, but you may see more, you may see more people taking advantage of the healthcare, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I really appreciate the, the comments, but I think we could also expect that some people on council and, and/or RTM are going to notice this anomaly, so we should.
It's always helpful to go through it here first.
We should be prepared to answer the question.
Yeah, I agree. We always appreciate that.
And I'm not saying it's a bad question, I just said just for everybody's edification that this number can fluctuate.
So that's the answer to that question, Ray?
We think we're going to check it out, though. We're going to ensure that it is.
Okay.
Ensure, how do you like it? Ha, ha, ha.
Yeah, so going back again to what we adopted last year, to what is in here, the number on 101, 18, or 1,00836, 649 is the same, but it says that we included 21 and a half FTE teachers in that budget. This budget, it seems like we adopted 20.5. So there's a difference in one FTE. So now we're down two, it looks like, but because the number's the same, I would imagine that the FTEs would be right, but it's just, again, clarification, how many, like, which FTE numbers are right, or correct, I should say?
The FTE chart that, everyone I've looked at, I've gone back now, everything we've reviewed, that FY '24, '25 adopted column, that first column on those charts, they're wrong. They're the old, they're the old years.
Just to clarify, are they a year prior?
Yeah, yeah.
23, '24, not 24, '25?
Maybe that's the problem that we.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the, the actual might be right for this year, but the adopted definitely is old.
Looks like the year before.
I think it's systemic.
Okay.
Throughout it, yeah.
Okay. Well, that would be a solution.
But, but, but as I asked last night, these chart documents with FTEs are, is a separate actual file, I think.
Yes, it is. You're right.
From this, which is an Excel sheet. So they're not linked together.
So are the charts that we got last night, are those correct? The update, those three pages of updates?
I think, were you looking at those again today, the charts that they got?
But those ones aren't, the charts from last night aren't by function, so you'll never, you'll never put them together.
Huh, those weren't, oh, those aren't ready either.
No, there's a newer version.
There's a, there is a newer version that, I'm not sure why you got that version, but there is a corrected version coming.
All right.
So I would discard those from last night.
We're going to get you something better than that.
Jen?
Shame on me, because I guess all this time I thought group insurance was whatever the amount, let's say a million. We know it's not. And then you would prorate it based on the number of FTEs regardless of what services they procure or take or don't take. And so that the allocation of group insurance would be just a function of FTEs. Did not realize we, as an organization, went and allocated everyone's group insurance based on if they take it or they don't take it, which I believe is just adding unnecessary work on our side. And Ray, you can tell me I'm wrong, but that doesn't make sense to me.
You have, you have to budget assuming that all employees are going to take it. You can't budget, you can't throw a dart and say 10 employees are going to take it or 20 employees. You have to assume that they're going to take at least a certain percentage of the budget is going to be allocated toward, toward the employees.
Exactly. So it's a, it's, say you had, I don't know, a million dollars and you had like 100 employees and so it would just be divided 100 employees into that million dollars. And then as the FTEs are spread, that amount is going to be separated here. So because the only reason it brought into my attention was when you guys were saying like, oh yeah, there is a decrease of teachers, but like the services of the group insurance that they took were going to be higher. And that was an explanation that just didn't make sense to me. So I'm assuming that if we went and the teachers decreased, that the group benefit allocation would decrease proportion to the number of FTEs decreasing. That's just, just, that's how I was thinking about it.
You're saying that necessarily?
If you have an eight, 10, 15% increase in your total cost, and even though you have less people taking the insurance, your total overall cost is still going to rise.
Yes, but then that would be in all of the function codes, not just one.
Depending on how it's loaded.
Yeah.
But if you have more employees in this function code, you don't, it's not equally distributed between the function. If I've got five employees in one function code and 10 in the other, the, in theory, the function code with 10 employees would be weighted a little heavier than the one with five.
Exactly. But over here, it, we went down.
I'm confused with your question.
Well, I'm confused by your answer, to be frank.
How can that be?
Because, because your FTEs went from 20 to 19.5, so it's a decrease of one. It's not a proportional decrease or a proportional increase based on that decrease. It's like you're going down by one and you're increasing by like 129.
The last three years, over the last two years or possibly the three, what was the average insurance increase? Percent of that?
I don't know, like, let's say 10%.
Probably eight to 10% each year, right? So if you've got a $3 million policy, your overall policy just increased 3 million, then it increased again by another, let's say 10%, so that's 330 of 3.3.
I'm not, I'm not invalidating that math. What I'm saying is when you spread it and if you're between, you went down, so why is it going up? Every other place you went down, it's not going up. Do you know what I mean? Like, it's just, it doesn't seem like it's being distributed equally.
Okay. I can see what you're saying, but in reality, you have to weight it on the number of employees who are actually taking the insurance.
Okay.
Okay?
We're good. Let's go on.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll just go off that. I just did, so if everybody, if all 19 and a half employees took benefits at roughly $35,000, it would have been 682,000. So we could have just, we could have gone from 50% participation to 75% participation and had a number change like that. I think that's what Ray is saying, correct, Ray?
Yes, yes. And again, the numbers are not fixed. I mean, you may see a huge savings in this line at the end of the year. It's hard to say because you have to predicated upon those that are taking the insurance now. You know what I mean? So you may have 19.5 employees. It, it's hard to say because you, you have to predicated upon those that are taking the insurance now. You know what I mean? So you may have 19.5 employees, if they were all to take it, I mean, you'd see a huge increase like that. So, and 35,000 is just a ballpark number, depends on the type of insurance, the carrier, the number of employees within the program. There's a lot of, a lot of variables when it comes to healthcare insurance.
All right, anything else on this page?
Comes music. So we have five teachers at the middle school, we have two at the high school, seven total, and that's really been for the past, since they opened up the middle school, the one middle school. So, and it talks to you a little bit in the narrative about the different types of music and music programming that we have. In the budget, we have the 2.1% increase for salaries and wages, you know, based on contract and steps. We also have in the, here we have in the benefits, a decrease of 7.2%. You go down to repair of equipment, and their equipment is certainly their instruments, so I know that that's a, you know, usually a large bill for the music department. And then you have travel for field trips, and you see there are money for field trips, entry fees and competitions, here there's music supplies, computer software, and replacement of instructional equipment. And the total budget is just up 0.6% or $4,734 for the two music departments at the middle school and the high school.
Other than the marching band, what other, you know, for 13,000, that's, to me, that's a lot for field trips. Other than the marching band?
The choruses do a lot of work, too. They, they are traveling and going different places and performing, so we do have honors choir, and it's just really, you know, and then you have the... We have band competitions, but also, and I don't know, well, that's all I'm going to say. I can find out more, though, if there's anything else.
I could add one.
Okay, can you add one?
Eastern Regional Orchestra and Choir Festival happens every year, and so they go up to UConn stores for, for two days, so there's, there's buses associated with that. I should say, we have many representatives from our school, and our own Carl Victorino sung the National Anthem with a quartet to start off the whole show, so it's a very proud moment.
Very talented kids, yeah.
Any questions on page 525 or 524? Okay, next page.
Okay, Phys Ed, we have five proposed in the budget, just like we did for 25 at the middle school and 3.5 at the Fitch High School, a total of 8.5, and tells you a little bit in the narrative about the different programs that we have and a program description for both middle school and high school. And then the bottom line here is this 0.5%, so you're seeing that each of these departments are bringing in either small decreases or small increases and at an amount of $5,493 increase. Certified teachers are down 2.3%, and I'm not certain that we've had any shifts in that, do you know?
No, if you, when we get to the health, there's a, there's a direct offset. It's just how the resources are applied between health and PE because they move all the time.
Oh, okay.
Depending on the offering, the course offering.
All right. And then you've got your group insurance that is up 10.9%. You've got instructional services, professional services, repair of equipment, travel for field trips, and physical education supplies, additional instructional equipment, and the total, like I said, is up 0.5%.
Matthew?
Thank you. Line 588, travel for field trips. For all the trips that we take for athletic events all over the state, that we could do that for $2,000 is astounding.
I don't know where they are going, but I can find out.
This is just physical education classes.
This is classes, the physical classes. No, this isn't athletics.
Okay, my bad, my bad.
Yeah.
Fine.
And do I, do I recall that our students didn't do that well in Phys Ed?
They're working on it, they, I think they've made some improvements from last year to this year, but they're working on it, yeah.
So do you feel this budget's going to help us improve in that category?
I think I should ask the Phys Ed department. How are we going to improve? How do we get these kids moving again?
Asking for math, too, right?
If, if...
Gosa was helping us get outdoors and walk in those hiking, but now everybody's nervous about it.
If they say, if you give us this, we can do it, get a metric from them.
I will. Well, how are you going to do it?
A goal, a goal that they can attain.
Yeah.
I will say that physical education test is like the same thing that was 20 years ago, 30 years ago, 40 years ago.
Hasn't changed much.
It's kind of crazy. So you might blame the test on that one.
But they're not doing, not doing those pull-ups and push-ups, they're doing the...
It's got the flex, flex arm reach or whatever you do. It's, it's very old school.
The one takes the cup to the mouth?
So you're saying the test is old?
It's definitely old.
Yeah, it's definitely, but it's push-ups and pull-ups, so things that we had to do, but they don't, they don't do that as much, but I'll ask about that.
Okay.
Are we preparing for that? How are we preparing for that?
Any other questions on 527, 526? Moving right along?
Science, we have nine middle school science teachers and 11 Fitch High School teachers. So it was 20 in this current year, and it's going to be 20 for next year, so no changes. We did take a cut the year before in '24. So with, you know, from '24 to '25, I think we, we reduced one. That's one of those four FTEs. And then, again, we look at the science department, it's down 1.9% for their total budget, which is $44,841. Certified teachers are actually down 6.5% because of that shift of the, you know, when we reduced the one FTE into this last year's budget. So you have the group insurance that's up 14.1% at $61,205. You have instructional services. You have total purchase professional services. You have repair of equipment at 500. Travel for field trips, and the travel for field trips is $9,500. And I don't know if that's specific to Project O, but I do know that they do some of the field trips with Project O, so both at the middle school and at the high school. But I can find out more if that was in additional trips that might be taken besides Project O.
Could it be at NASS, somebody had presented on NASS?
It could be, it could be NASS, yeah. And then, let's see, was there anything I missed here? Science supplies, they always cost some money, you know, we always have to replenish those. There's some textbook cost in here, some workbook cost, and, but bottom line is they did decrease by close to 2%.
I'm sorry, go on, go on. I'm just going back to my denseness, so like the...
It's not your dense, it's just, it's a complicated problem.
No, so if we go back to where I was asking, right, it's like 20 to 19, showing an increase of 129. This is like roughly the same size, 21 to 20, a decrease of one, both a decrease of one. This is only showing an increase of 65. Just trying to understand.
Which line are you on?
She's on group insurance.
My group insurance.
Oh, your group, yeah.
It's just, that's it.
Okay.
Ian, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just curious to know if we could get some more descriptions on the instructional services?
Okay.
321?
I'll have to look into that for you.
I had a question on that as well.
Go ahead.
I would love to know what is causing the trend, but I do know that even if it's completely justified, we're, we're almost doubled in two years, and that kind of, that kind of trend is frightening.
Doubled, what are you doubling?
Well, from 20, on line 430, on 4, excuse me, 321, it went from just under 30,000 to just under 45,000 to just under 60,000. That's almost a doubling in two years.
I think that's the Project O partnership that we have, but I will double check. There is a partnership that costs $58,000.
I'm not saying it's not a wonderful thing, but I do say the trend is not sustainable.
Well, I can double check on that for you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Michael?
A quick one, so I struck, I see the science supplies at 14,000 and it's up, but I struck by, that's grade six through 12 for science, that's a lot of students, not a lot of supplies. Science is near and dear to my heart, and I know, I know when you have more supplies, you can do more labs. And so, for instance, the science supplies budget is, I think, probably way less than tech ed budget would be similarly. So I was just wondering, I mean, how did they get by with so few supplies? That's my, my question.
Unless they've got a lot in the closet.
Maybe it's built into the Project O budget.
No, I'm talking different lines, 602, science supplies.
I will find out.
Because, you know, 4,000 divided by probably 400 students is, you know, what is that, 10 bucks a student? Well, it's 14.
Well, that's the increase.
Oh, it's 14, oh, right, right, so.
It's 14,000.
But it's that.
Well, it's, it's amazing that the actual number for '24, Mike, was 3,400 or, you know, 3,455.
That was really a big year.
But I will find out, like, do we have enough?
Math supplies is 1,200, that's almost the same, seems like math should be cheaper, a lot cheaper.
Was it 12,000 or 1,200?
Well, it could depend on what they already have, if they can use again.
Yeah, math supplies, 1,200.
Yeah, this is 14,000.
Yeah, oh, that is a lot cheaper, and then, yeah, tech ed, anyway.
Yeah, we can find out.
It's going to seem like a lot.
Okay. Moving to the next page.
Social studies. So we have 10 teachers at Groton Middle and 8.9 at Fitch High School, a total of 18.9. And remember, we do have teams at the high school, so there are three teams at every grade level times three, which is nine, and I think we, because of the enrollment and the space that we, in, when we tried to do this in 2020, we tried to shoot for nine, but we ended up with 10 at each of the core subject areas to make it work, the class size, because they were filled up even bigger than 24 if we didn't, so we had to do it that way. So that's been pretty consistent, although there looks like a slight variation at Fitch High School of, you know, 0.4 differentiation, I don't know why that was. I don't know what the reason for that was, or it looks like a 0.5 teacher reduction, maybe, back in the day?
That's a 0.5.
You mentioned that one of the social studies teachers is also in French or something else, there was an overlap.
Well, there, there was an overlap, there was that, the teacher who's social studies that was teaching Latin, too, so maybe that...
It's 0.1, yeah.
Is that, okay.
Yeah, it was 0.1 Latin.
All right. So when we look at this budget, it's up 3% or $57,976. We see certified teachers are up 2.2%, and that's based on contractual. We see that the health benefits are at 6.9% increase, and we see some field trips here, too, travel for field trips. This actually makes me feel pretty good that each of our, our core, our instructional areas are, you know, getting kids out for field experiences.
That's a big increase for them.
That is a big increase.
Where are they going?
I don't, I'm going to find out. Not to Hawaii. So we've got classroom supplies, not very much for classroom supplies, a little bit of software, a little bit for textbook, probably just for replacement, and some workbooks. So their supply list is not very great at all. But that does amount, when you add it all up, to the, the field trip because it, it's much more than what they've had, it's up 620%, so I do want to find out where they're going.
Yeah, right, yeah, that's a lot.
But it's based on a little, you know, when a little goes up a little more, it seems like a, a bigger percentage. Anybody have questions about social studies?
Matthew?
I'd like to make a referral, a no-cost referral that will have some immediate benefits and outcomes to the younger people. I'm going to channel Rita and Liz to strengthen civics instruction by making mandatory attendance at a local state. Local, state, or federal governmental deliberative meeting is part of a curriculum for Fitch students. Let them come, let the administration figure out how many times a year, at what grade level, but kids seeing how government functions, it can be tedious.
I can find out, there may be some of that in the, every child has to take a civics course in the high school, it's mandatory, so we can find out in the curriculum if there is some of that work being done already. I can find out.
I understood there wasn't, but I've been wrong before.
Well, no, I, we could find out, we just don't know, you know?
Who, who's going to take that on?
I'm writing it down now.
Thank you.
Jen?
So back in the day, they used to have field trips to like our state Capitol Building? Do they still do that as either part of social studies or any other class?
I can find out, I feel like...
I don't remember what grade it was, I just remember like...
Yeah, I don't know.
And then you would meet with like the Heathers who are there, or their aides and walk you around.
I can find out.
Okay.
Anything else? Sam, you have a question? Okay, next page.
All right, next page. IB middle years program, we have expenditures for the IB middle years, which includes 6 through 10 grade, and there are some travel expenses because teachers have to continue to get their professional learning in IB. I do know that we do have one of our grants that is specific to IB that does help support this, both the MYP, the IB diploma, and the IB career program. So there is a little bit of money for field trips. It's, you know, professional materials, a small amount for professional materials. The dues and fees, which are, you know, help regulate our district, they help, they come in and they actually do visits with us at a cer, I think the next one's coming up in a year or two, and then they, they really support the work of the teachers. And the, this year we have Kathy Wilson, who had retired, and through the grant, she will help coordinate the MYP, continue to coordinate and work with us, and help provide some professional learning as well for the teachers. So we do have that through the grant. So it's down 1.2.
How many people are on these travel for field trips?
Well, what we're really looking at, I think, more to do, especially with this grant, is to bring an authorized MYP trainer to the school to do it like during a professional development day, so it wouldn't cost us subs and it wouldn't cost us travel. So there is going to be a shift in that, but there are still some, especially for some of the leadership roles, some needs to, to actually go to some of these. One is in Washington DC where they go for the headquarters at IB to get some training.
This is more new teachers that have to get the required training, teach the courses, that small amount for travel.
There's also, they also have now online courses, so we've also shifted to online courses, they're bringing teachers in, it does save us money, so whenever we find those opportunities, we do those opportunities.
I have a question for Susan.
Go ahead.
The budgeted cost seems so low for the value received, I, I hope you are the, do you want to go first, Ian?
No, continue.
Okay. I hope you folks have a... Okay. I hope you folks have a chance to see the MYP project, fulfillment project at the end of the year. And you just see the student outcomes.
It's a 10th grade project. It's a personal project. They really do it completely independently. And it shows you all the work that has gone in from 6 to 10.
The budgeted cost seems so low to me that I'm wondering if there are other costs nested elsewhere. And if there are not, and we are able to find some economies, then a question to Susan is, is this a place where those economies could be deployed? Is this a place you would recommend? If we were able to save X dollars somewhere in the budget, could we redeploy it? Would you think that this would be a priority for you to redeploy outcomes?
Not in the next five years, because I have this new IB MYP grant, and that's through DODIA. It's helping to support us continuing in this mission. And as I told you, DODIA was very impressed with what we've accomplished and what we continue to aspire to. And it's something that's recognized in the Department of Defense schools as a real plus for students, especially those who are traveling from base to base and place to place.
Dean?
I don't know why I didn't think of this before. And the supplies, not just this section, but all sections. We've, we've all discussed analogies between how we do budgeting and how the town does budgeting and all of that. It just, the, the light went off just now. What you see in the town budget is you'll see your personnel laid out for each department, whether it's police or public works, your personnel laid out. Then you'll have sections regarding, you know, for personal costs, salaries, benefits, your payroll costs, et cetera. Then any expenses that go with the department. And then you'll see below that, the source of funding. How much from general, from the general fund, how much is coming from a particular grant for road maintenance or something like that, from the feds, from the state, whatever. So you always have an idea for every department, how much, how much of that department is being funded by the general fund? How much is being funded by a particular grant or something like that? That's the part that's always missing here. And we're not alone. I've looked at other town budgets in other states as well. Their budget consists of all their expenses. You can never find out anywhere in their 100-page document where the money's coming from, probably in a separate document. But that's what I'm used to. And I would, I'm not advocating it for this. And I know there's a lot of work to pair up every one of these sheets with, by the way, this is how we're paying for, this is how we're paying for. And I also realize that we're breaking this down by subject matter area. These are not discrete departments like police, public works, parks and rec. But, you know, I would be curious to know just exactly where would the money be coming from, especially want to hear things like, well, okay, one of these positions is being funded by, or we hope to get it funded by.
Well, no, I'm saying all of this is operational. I had just said to you that we do have an MYP coordinator now, but she's coming through DODIA grant. You don't see it on here.
Right, that's, that's the other thing. Again, I hate bad analogy with the town, but you know, you'll see Sennecost is something completely separate. But other than that, most everything fits in the town budget, no matter how it's being funded. So we have our operational budget, and then we've got these side things as well. So we have these people, but there are other people that are paid for from other sources. So to understand how many people the school is employing and for what, you've gotta put this together with everything else, which is not impossible. But we're doing like the big, you know, big brother over here, but there are little siblings on the sides. I'd love to see what it all looks like, regardless of how it's being paid with.
We do have a grant sheet that we're working on, that you're gonna see a better view of the grants that we do have. We don't have as many, because all those art investors are gone. But we do have grant pages.
Okay, so we've got science, we've got math, we've got phys ed, and we've got, these are the people who are doing this. We have the IB program. These are the people who are doing this, these are the expenses, this is how it's all being paid for. By, you know, that's, I'm just sort of curious, just exactly, what is it all costing people?
Back on this page, you could put the MYP coordinators as grant-funded.
Would a narrative note that this constitutes our operational budget, but there is further support for the MYP program from?
DODIA 2024.
DODIA 2024 grant in the amount of XYZ dollars.
Yeah, at the very least, a link of some sort, because if you were to look at the operational budget and add up all the FTEs, you'd say, okay, we have this many employees. But is that how many people are actually working in the district? Well, no, we have another 20 people funded from this, 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 and this. Okay, all right, so how many people are working in the district?
I feel like there is this page in our, that we have used.
It is the FTE schedule, but to his point, it doesn't tie expenses to it.
Oh, that's true. Yeah.
Anyway.
All right.
Is that something you would like to see in the future?
Yeah, I would. I don't know if anybody else would. If I'm a minority of one, that's fine too.
You might not be a minority of one.
I'd like to see it.
I'd be on board with that too.
Yeah. Okay, anything else on this page? All right, next page.
Next page is health education. This is what Lori was referring to when you said PE, phys ed. A lot of teachers are, most teachers now are cross-certified, so they have both health and PE. So you might have a teacher teaching both. You might have one teacher teaching just health or one teacher just teaching PE. So we, so they kinda coordinate, don't they, Lori?
They do.
So while it says one health teacher at Groton Middle and 2.5 at Fitch, there are probably some of those PE teachers also teaching health, right? So when we look at this budget, it's up 9.3%. Now, there's no increase of staffing, but by the salaries and wages, it is up 9.8. And that's due to contracts and steps. We see that the health benefits are up 8%. We see a 25% increase in professional tech services. And because it's gone from, oh no, that's a decrease. It's gone from 2,000 down to 1,500. We have travel for field trips also in this department. We have general supplies at only $1,000. We have health supplies for 500, workbooks for 500, and equipment for 500. I'm not sure what the equipment is, but maybe something for that, you know, for monitoring their health. I don't know. And then, so the total is 9.3% increase at $31,951.
Any questions about health education? Michael.
Just a quick point. This is one of those where our adopted budget had three positions, not that 2.1 in that column. And so we're up by, by half. And that's more, seems to correspond more with that increase/decrease that you see.
But it looks like actually what we have this year is 3.5. But I, I don't know if it's the FTEs or if it's just the way it's laid out, Lori, because we have that total. If you put, it would almost be better if you said health and PE and you put just all the people there.
Look at them together, the FTE should line up.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that, that top number, 101, at 316, 119 in gray, that's corresponding to the adopted budget from, that we adopted last year, and that, that corresponds to 3.0 FTE, not 2.1. So, so that explains why it's not, that increase/decrease isn't very large there, because it's half a FTE.
Yeah.
I'm still hung up on, you know, like, are we, are teachers really getting an 8% increase on average in their salary? I mean, I know it's with steps and everything, but I'm hung up on that.
When we looked at the total.
Make sure with that. Not, not in this one in particular. This one seems more like in line. I just, I'm just having trouble processing that. I figure it'd be more like, you know, 3%, 4% kind of thing.
I think on step years, it's a bigger percentage, but, but non-step years, it's like 2.5% or something, right? Or 2%? Is that correct, Lori?
Yeah, and when we get these large departments, not, not this one so much, but
Elementary.
Math or science or elementary, like going up on that law of averages, it just seems, it seems like something's missing there.
Yeah, because science went up 6.5%.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know how the step, well, do we have that actually as a board? Do we have the steps? The step, like the.
We have their, we have the teacher contracts.
It's all in the teacher contract.
Which we, we have probably.
Found on some non-Groton Public Schools website.
We have. Are they, are they listed on the website?
If you Google it, you can find it.
Some is lower. My colon is 2.6.
Because that's like two people, right?
Yeah, music is 2.1. Depends on how many teachers and where they are with their steps.
But you'd figure when it gets to those, like if it's that small departments, like culinary or something, where there aren't many teachers, I could see that swing up or down based on where someone is. But when you get to, you know, a group of 10 or 20 or more.
120.
It seems like, seems like it would average out to less, but.
Well, when you look at the summary from one year to the next, from FY25, the total number of certified teachers went from 10,803,743 to 11,626,919, which is an increase of under 1,008,23,176.
That's about 10%.
Yeah.
And we lost in our.
Well, not quite.
There a substantial loss in certified teachers, like eight or something?
I'd have to look. I thought there were four. But were there more than that? I don't know.
We got something on retirements, nine, I think, right? Wasn't clear what was being refilled or not.
From last year, are you saying, or for this year?
This year.
Yeah, so right now, there's no proposed reduction of those nine in this, in the FY26 budget.
We're gonna fill all nine of those retirements?
That's what the budget currently has in it, yes.
Oh, all right. So that's a question on the FAQ from last week. Like, what's gonna be filled?
I know, I went back here. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so in FY26, right now, all nine are projected to be filled.
What page were you on? 527?
527.
Sorry.
Any other questions? No? All right, next page. Science.
I think I did science. I did science. I did social studies. I did MYP.
International Baccalaureate, 1117.
Okay, there we go. So this is the IB diploma program. I think the careers is separated out. So you look at, it's up, it's down 8.5% or $5,100. There are instructional services, 321, which is professional learning, instructional improvement services. There is postage and travel, and, you know, it's not a whole lot for travel. There's some field trip money. Classroom supplies, some pupil tests, they're involved. We also have that for AP, and we've been covering both AP and IB testing in the district for several years now. And free and reduced lunch, students can get those charges waived for free. So we're doing a campaign for free meals, but, and more. That, there's a lot of opportunity when a child, when the parents fill in that form for free and reduced lunch, because it affords other things too, beyond the free meals. General classroom supplies, pupil tests, computer software, some textbooks and professional materials. And then there's the school dues at 12,000. So the total was $54,900 for the program, when you add that all up.
And none of the students pay for the tests?
No, and they don't pay for AP tests either. Or they don't pay for the seal of biliteracy. We've really covered the testing costs.
Yeah, so, thank you. We have the line 321 and 322. Be curious to see more details on what services are included on that list for both 321, 322.
Lori?
Any other questions?
Question for Lori. Could we expand the narrative to indicate, to identify off-budget resources? Without having any staff assigned, specifically assigned to International Baccalaureate, it raises questions. And, you know, we have it funded, off-town budget resources. And the other question, this goes to all the narrative, if you could bump up the font size a little bit, that would be very helpful.
Bump up what?
The font size, the size of the print, to make it easier to read. Some of us are over 30.
Do you have these?
Any stronger glasses?
So one of the things I was thinking about is we just started paying for student tests for all students a couple of years ago. And a potential place for savings would be to reduce that number a little bit and just pay for students with actual need. Because there's, there's lots of families that, that need the money. But then there's also lots of families in those classes that probably would be okay spending the $100 test fee. And if we're spending 20,000 on IB, we're spending at least twice that much on AP, I would assume, because there's, I wanna say, three times more AP classes taken than IB. So there might be a substantial savings there. And if we were to do that, I would propose that we just do free and reduced lunch doesn't pay, or if you can't afford it, and we can just let the schools work out that.
We'll keep that thought when we have, when we have the budget.
So, yeah, when we talk about that, the other thing I would like to mention is that the, the cost of this program is much higher than $55,000. We run, like on AP classes, we run 15 classes. The average class size is 7.7. In IB, and I believe this is because we're just doing the diploma, not IB in general, but the class size average is about 11 or 11.1 students per class. Where, and we're running 19 classes, a total of 21 sections. So we are running, and I think last year, we were told that seven students got the IB diploma. This year, I don't believe any more than nine can get it, because there's one class that you have to take your senior year, and there's only nine, nine kids enrolled in it. So for getting the diploma specifically, we are spending a lot by having these small classes and teachers that might be able to otherwise teach other things. I mean, our reading scores in elementary are, you know, 55 or so percent at third grade are reading at grade level. So we're spending lots of money on kids in the high level if they get there. But we know if kids aren't reading by the end of third grade at grade level, there's like a 90% chance that they're never, they're gonna be behind in their entire school career. So I, I see us as spending a lot of money on the swimming pool on the top of the building, and we're not building a foundation for it by teaching kids. So, you know, that, not running all those classes with, with such low enrollment would save a lot. I've, I've done some, you know, rough calculations, but it's a lot of money that could be diverted somewhere else if we were to just run the courses that actually had the demand. So I don't know how that, you know, that ties to this budget category, kind of, but it's a bigger discussion on.
It is, and we're committed to a DODIA grant for the next five years. And the expectation is that we will run these programs. And it's really seen in the, in the world of, you know, Department of Defense and the schools, military, other military schools as a real, and in our state, as a real jewel. It's really an incredible experience for those kids who go through it. And it's not just diploma kids. We have kids who are taking many, many IB courses along with their AP courses. It gives our kids a lot of opportunities. So I don't know, you can certainly discuss it, but we are committed with this DODIA grant.
Are we committed to offering the IB diploma? I'm not, I don't think that we should get rid of the IB program. I think that there's lots of really beneficial classes in there. But we're, you know, we saw what we spend compared to all these other towns. We're not a wealthy district when it comes to how we fund our children. And we're buying a Cadillac service that very few kids actually use.
Well, more and more will be doing that. That's part of this whole.
If we keep cutting AP and other classes.
No, 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 no. If we continue to give them the foundation of the MYP and potentially PYP in the future.
I, I just think we should give them the foundation of being able to read and do. I, I just think we should give them the foundation of being able to read and do math. I mean, we have to pick priorities as a board of education, and, and this does need some more discussion on whether we need to offer. Does anyone know how many total IB classes? I mean, we're running right now 19, but do we know how many total IB classes we have?
I think it might be something like 32, but I've got the number, because we've looked at it for curriculum.
So, we, I mean, we offer tons of classes, and I'm guessing that scheduling is much more difficult, because we're offering all of these classes where there's only one section, so we're trying to get kids into it.
It's 32. 32 IB classes are on the 24, 25 plan of study for, for Fitch High School.
Yes.
But, but as, as you said, it seems like there are only 19.
Being run right now.
Yeah.
And, and.
And there are 15 AP.
And the demand, it's, it's something, you know, the mid-700s as far as kids taking an AP class, you know, one or more, well, total AP classes, I don't know how, some kids are taking multiple, obviously, but it's about three times more than IB. So, we're spending a lot of money in this. It's a great program, but we're not a wealthy district, and there are some places that we can really use the money. I mean, is it fair that we have five and six kids in these IB classes, but when you're in third grade, you have 23 across the district? Like, I have to imagine that if you went to a third grade teacher and said, could you do a better job with 18 kids? I'm pretty sure 100% would say yes. So, we really should think about this.
Well, one of the things that I've talked to the state about is to possibly offer an International Baccalaureate inter-district magnet, which would then afford some of this and give back to us as well. That you could, we have about four or five students now on tuition who are here because of the IB program, coming from all different areas. And so, that could be something that, you know, the state has now lifted the moratorium, and it could open up the doors for other students in other, you know, maybe East Slime and other areas across the southeastern Connecticut. There's not many IB diploma programs, and Anne Marie's up there. She knows that, she ran at East Hartford, one of the, you know, really awesome IB programs. I don't know if you want to talk about that, but it definitely could be something that we could potentially look in to offset some of those costs, if that's what you're concerned about.
I think Adrian's saying, for the price of the program, for the diploma program, we're only getting 11 graduates.
No, not 11.
Not even 11.
I mean, I think, two years ago, I think there was three.
Right.
And then last year, we were told seven, but it might have been six. But, and then this year, it can't be more than nine. And, there's other things that we should talk about. I mean, the program requires a tremendous amount of work in the spring of your senior year, after everybody's gotten into college, so there's a big, there's not a big advantage to actually getting the IB diploma for most of the schools in the United States. I mean, I can't imagine.
I would, I would disagree with that.
But you're already enrolled in school by the time you get the diploma.
And it's, the advantage is, a lot of times, the way the student is able to navigate in the first year of school and then forward. We hear all the time, the great success and the great readiness that they have for colleges, and very, very good schools.
I don't think he's saying, do away with the whole program, just don't offer as many classes.
I think we should have a minimum class size. Or, I mean, I, I shouldn't say that, because sometimes you offer to a student something with the promise of offering another section of it, and so we couldn't just get rid of all these programs for next year, or the low class enrollment for next year. So sometimes, I think the district has to do that, their principals have to do that, run a class with not many kids, like the, or the BC Calculus, right?
Right.
You need to run that class, even though there's only, like, was it nine kids or something in it?
They're wonderful. I've been in there.
Yeah, well, it's an important class, but.
It's an important class.
There is, there is a lot of overlap. Like, we're not running IB chemistry right now, but sometimes if you were to add the AP and the IB together, you might have 15 or 16 or 17 kids.
And that's big.
And we're running two very small classes, side by side, that do the same thing in different ways. And I, I don't want to say that the IB is a bad idea. It's just a very expensive idea, and it's not, it's not shown to us at $55,000 in this budget. It's because of the increased staff requirements to run these small classes, I mean, there's a lot of extra certified teachers that we're, that we're paying for to run the IB classes specifically for the diploma program.
Can you actually give us the total cost of running the IB program?
It's hard to break out that way, because a lot of students are in that class who aren't in diploma, so those classes do fill up sometimes, because they've got other kids who are taking the IB courses that might not be getting the diploma, but they're still taking IB courses.
Jen.
So.
Jen.
Yeah, pass it around.
So it's the IB theory.
Theory of knowledge.
The IB theory of knowledge is a required class to get the IB diploma. And this year, in Level Two of that, there are nine students. So, potentially nine could get the IB diploma, but I think this fact is going to show us that it's unlikely that all nine will get a diploma.
Chris Moore.
A few will.
Chris Moore is the teacher who is really leading IB diploma now, and he has done a magnificent job, really encouraging kids to come in. There have been a lot of cross, cross endorsements, so you can be an IB, you can be an IB DP student, you can also take the AP assessment, or you can take the UConn credit, so we're trying to cross, cross-pollinate those, so kids would get credit and get a diploma. So there's a lot of good work that's being done by our teachers, trying to marry those curriculums and get kids, you know, more than a certificate, but also the credit. So, I would say that might be a good topic to have some of the teachers come and talk to you about. I think when we first decided on NYPD, one of the things the board members did at that time was they went into the theory of knowledge course, and they were, Dr. Ackerman can talk about that, and were really impressed by the experience.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, you said, these are, these are great programs, and we're not disputing that.
Right.
At least, I'm not disputing that. I'm just disputing that they're very expensive, and they're, they're repetitious to the AP. They don't work well with AP. They work, they don't work in conjunction with AP. They have a different way of, of teaching. But I think for foreign language, Mr. Brown was saying that the foreign language teachers think that they teach foreign language better. So, like, so we don't offer any AP foreign language. But we're just offering a lot of IB, like, Theater Arts Two has 11 kids, Math HL12 has three. I kind of wonder if, and then Math HL11 has seven, so, which means we're going to have less than seven next year in HL12, or at least as many as seven. But I really wonder if some of those kids might do fine in Calculus AB and Calculus BC, and we're really, just because of the diploma program, if we're, if we're, you know, running two sections, we could otherwise be, you know, spending the money in a, in a more even way throughout the district, so that, so that it's not just spent on a couple of kids that are going to get the diploma.
Well, you could bring that up again, when the, when the board gets the budget, and we talk about the budget.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I, I don't know how, I mean, all of that is buried in everything that we've been talking about tonight, right?
Right.
So how do you, I can't do that, and it would be hard for the, you know.
We can't do that in a year, and we've got a five-year grant.
The board can.
To do IB, all of the IB.
I don't, did the board vote on those commitments?
Yes, we, when we got the grant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But those, I would like to know exactly, I'd like to know what they, what they say as far as our requirement for the diploma program, but I'd like to read them specifically. I've asked for, actually, all the grants.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, does the grant say specifically the diploma program?
Yeah, and then.
Or just IB classes?
And then, if that's the case, I mean, we've been doing IB for over 10 years, maybe the board just needs to think about a five-year plan on where we want to be. Do we want to spend money on our younger kids? And I'm not sa, I'm just saying we're, you know, we could spend more money in elementary, and we're clearly not, you know, knocking it out of the park in elementary. So I'm just giving an example. And, and I don't know that we can necessarily move money in this budget. I mean, maybe we could, and, and that's why, you know, what I do recommend, that we look at spending money on tests and, and people that just don't need, that can afford the $100 for tests.
Thank you. Jen?
So with the IB and the AP program, right, just because my kid went to school, he didn't do the whole program, but he supplemented. I'm just using him as an example. There's a lot of other kids who used it as, like, they took AP and IB. What it does is, even if you're not getting the full degree, it shows the colleges, and we're just focusing on the college students in this, right? All of the, that you are taking the highest level classes that you can in your district. So that's what it's showing, and it shows that commitment to, like, trying, that they will be able to succeed in, like, a higher level, whatever, college or stuff. So, don't look at the 10 or 15, but look at the entire population that takes those classes. I don't know how many kids those are. It could just be 50, for all I know, right? So, it's not, your N number is not 10, it's some, it's some number that Susan.
Over 100.
That Susan and company know about. And I do, and some of those AP classes are starting to get combined with, like, the UConn classes, so.
Well, IB is doing the same thing. IB can connect with AP, and it also connects with UConn.
Yeah, so, what ends up happening then is the kids, our kids, this is why I'm always fighting for it, is like, our kids are, I believe, getting penalized by being an alliance district when they're applying to colleges. I don't know, I don't have any statistical things to support that, right? So, the more that you could give them to say that they're participating in IB and AP, gives them a little bit more of an advantage or a level playing field. In regards to the IB program, right, we started it just at the high school, but now, it's like, you know, middle school. So we never built the pipeline, so we need to build the pipeline as, as.
It's in the grant.
As Anne Marie, yeah, no, no, I know.
It's in the grant.
But as Anne Marie in the, in the East Hartford, one of my friend's daughter went through the East Hartford school system, and that district is probably just as financially disadvantaged as Groton, and they're able to run a very successful program. So what maybe, the answer is, we need to reevaluate, like, the program itself and how it's being run, and not necessarily, and then maybe the five that we have now, in five years, it will be 20, right? Or whatever the number is. But, we definitely have Anne Marie on board, and, like, let's see what you're doing in East Hartford.
And that grant was really meant to give it a rejuvenation, and we've got some new leadership, and I think that they're very excited about it. I would love to have them come in to a meeting, to a COW, to talk to you a little more about that, you know, after we're done with the budget.
And Adrian.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, to voice support for Adrian's suggestion on, on taking a critical look at these things, because I think what, what I'm taking away from the point that he's making is that there's a cost-benefit analysis that I think is necessary as far as, like, class sizes and allocation of teachers across the district. And if we, you know, typically, like, if you, if you have higher achieving students or students that are aspiring to achieve higher, you're not going to have behavioral concerns as much in those classes. So you could actually go larger with those classes, whereas, like, in the lower grade levels, like, the, the younger grade levels, you know, you're going to need more, you know, mindfulness, more ability for the teacher to, to, to manage behaviors in the classroom. So having smaller class sizes at a lower level is a value, because then that's where you build the foundations for literacy and numeracy, you know, which will then lead to the pipeline that you speak of for the higher level classes. So I think, you know, there is something, a little, to my perception as well, perhaps a, a little out of balance, that we could take a look at recalibrating how we allocate our resources. But I think there is some value in having that conversation. Thank you.
We could always make a referral and to, for it to come to account, and we could talk about it at account.
Can I?
I don't want to.
Can I?
Sure. I'm going to make a very brief comment. My two youngest are at UConn. My oldest went to school out west, way out west. I don't think he was involved in the IB program at all. I'm sure he took a few AP classes, and he admittedly was not an A student coming out of, out of Fitch. A good student, but not an A student. What he found in his freshman year, and he was in a school that was not dominated, but was heavily, people populated from California, he was surprised at how unprepared, so, he, the other students were for handling college work. He thought, he basically eased very easily, and again, this, he was not a bright kid, but not an academic kid, not until he got to college, anyway, then he graduated magna cum laude. But he found himself much better prepared for tackling his freshman year than his peers from, mostly from California. So whatever was done here, and I'm going to give ourselves some credit to his parents, but whatever was done here in Groton School System, he was able to waltz right into college and had an easier time of it than his, than his peers did. We tend to lose sight of what we may be doing well. We don't have it a description in our book, we don't have it quantified, qualified, something's going on. I would be very curious, and this is not, this is for another time, to find out from our alumni what their experiences have been, when they landed in, in an, in an institution of higher education, that they feel like they were ready for it. And you've got to ask those questions the right way, because people say, oh my God, my freshman year was et cetera, et cetera, whatever it was. Some of them drank themselves to death, too, no doubt. There's always a percentage of those. But I would be curious to know, what kind of a job are we doing, at least on that front? I know not all kids go to college, but at least on that front, are we actually preparing kids, or are we sort of guessing? Do we ever get any feedback from anybody? That's, that's it.
Maybe we can have Zoe back.
That's an age-old question, and an age-old thing that we always wanted on the board.
What, to have our students?
Yeah, come back and talk about.
I think that, I put a note on that. I would love to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me go to Anne Marie. Anne Marie?
Thank you. Actually, that was something that I was just speaking with Chris Moore about when I met with him about a week or two ago, and he's in contact with a number of the students, especially from the IB program, and I asked him, you know, would he be willing to, as he's speaking with some of these recent graduates, have them come back and speak with the board, and, and he said he would speak with them about that opportunity. So, I'm hoping that we can set that up, because I know that that's something that you are interested in, and so I will follow up with him on that. And so I wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, some of the comments, been listening about, you know, the comments about IB, and I think that, you know, many of you, actually all of you have made points that I think are really valid, in my experience. Been a part of two different districts now that have had very strong IB programs. One, the Capital Region Education Council, and the second being East Hartford Public Schools. They do take a while to kind of get up and get running and get, I guess, you know, a placeholder in the, in the community, but once they do, I feel like they, they become very, very strong programs academically and, you know, lead to success for a, a number of students. But, you know, I want to reinforce a couple of things that people said in addition, you know, because I think no one is arguing the value in terms of academic strengths of those programs. They are very costly, and I've heard a number of people say that, you know, they cost a lot of money for professional learning and, and resources, mostly for professional learning and dues. So that's something to consider. And then, of course, for the IB exams. And a number of people have, you know, have gone back and forth, this is the first time I brought it up here, but a number of people have gone back and forth in terms of the IB exams, and should, should students or families incur a little bit of that cost? I've heard that discussion a number of times, because they are even, I think, more costly than the AP exam. So that's something to consider, if that's something that you feel like families could afford some or all of that cost. The, the other thing that I think is something to consider is, we offer here in Groton a number of courses. I, you know, just transitioned from a district that it was a much smaller program, a very successful high school. You know, a number of times while I was there, in my 11 years, it was number one or two in the state of Connecticut, at, high school in Connecticut, but it was a small high school. So, they offered, they were able to successfully have a number of students graduate with the IB diploma, or be IB diploma candidates. Every year, all, the entire senior class were IB diploma candidates, but they did not have to offer 33 classes to do that. And so that might be something that, you know, that we consider, looking at very closely how many IB courses and then how many AP courses the school offers. And then the last point I want to. And then the last point I want to make is that because IB is such a strong program academically, you do bring in, it could be a, I don't, I think I'm going to use the wrong term here, but it could be a revenue generator. As Superintendent Austin mentioned, with the, with the moratorium on magnet schools now dropped by the State Department of Ed, you can bring in other, students from other districts and bring in revenue for that. And then also in East Hartford and as well as Creck, we were able to bring in students from other countries who are willing to, especially those countries from Asia, specifically China, and they are willing to pay a top dollar. Really, you can name your price, and they are willing to come and study in the United States at an IB school to have, number one, have the academic experience, and then also to be around American students. And that was financially very beneficial for both school districts. And so that's something that I certainly can lend my experience to as well.
Thank you, Anne Marie.
Me.
Yeah, Andrew.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, if I could go after Anne Marie. And that is, I wanted to say a few things in, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I just wanted to say a few things in favor of IB, and that is that the students who, and I, I meet with a lot of students, and the students who are involved in the IB program give feedback that is so positive in, in terms of their experiences in the IB program at, at Fitch. And also, I'm, I'm involved with other, with other students in the area, and again, high, high feedback for, for the IB experience across the country. And also, colleges look favorably at IB diplomas, and even just IB courses taken individually. And in fact, I've heard of several students who have gotten full scholarships, a full ride, because they were in the IB program. So it's something to really, to really think about, and to get more students involved so that, you know, that, that, that idea of a full, a full ride for somebody who otherwise wouldn't be able to afford it at all. So, and, but the feedback across the board in all those different areas is very high.
Okay.
Thank you, Ray. Ray has to leave.
We could talk about this, whether it's a good program, keep it, or what. We can refer to.
Have a good night.
Can I be quick? Can I be quick?
Is it, is it going to be like?
I was just going to give some numbers and say that, so there, just so accurate on the numbers, there's 244 student classes, basically, in IB. That means one IB class could be each, you know, one student could be taking three. There's 709 AP. So the size is 17.73 is the students per class in AP, and 11.09 for IB. That being said, our high school, if we go on the Connecticut website for like, you know, school grades and stuff, we're spending about 10% more per child at high school than the district average. So I think the district average is, you know, it seems like we have a tough time coming up with this number, but on the state website, it's like 19,000 or a little over 19 and a half. And it's about 2,000 more, if you just go down to school by school, it's about 2,000 more at Fitch. So we're spending a lot of money at Fitch, and maybe it's things like this. I also wanted to.
Also sports.
Thank, yes, well, sports, I mean, certainly. I mean, there's lots of things, but, but that differential is, is a lot. I was looking at other schools, and some schools are similar, but a lot of schools aren't on the differential that they spend between elementary and, and high school. But I also wanted to thank Anne Marie for the thought of maybe reducing some of the classes and, and if there are any ideas, if, if we can save some staff FTEs, reallocate staff in the district by not running some of these classes that have three and four kids in it. I know it's long been a policy to run IB classes smaller than we're willing to run AP classes, but I have a feeling that your schedulers might appreciate that as well. So if there are any, any real thoughts, I mean, I think everyone has good ideas, and I don't think we should get rid of IB, but maybe there's some ways that we can make it more affordable for the district.
That's the key.
Thank you.
That's the key.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along.
I was just going to say, that sounds like we just had a, a review of honors programs for, at, at the high school level for curriculum committee. Maybe IB's next up, sort of in the context, anyway.
Yeah. And that's an interesting meeting, if you want to listen to that curriculum, I'll put a little plug in, but the high school.
Let's not, let's, let's keep going with the budget.
Explaining everything to watch.
We've got Sam here. Let's keep going.
We've got Sam here, but we also have Lori, and Lori has a long drive.
Oh, I didn't forget about you, Lori.
Yeah. So, and we really haven't gotten to anything for her.
Five thirty, page 538?
So there, yeah, and that's IB careers, so this is a program that really, it's mostly in the dues that you have for careers, but it's really part of the career pathway. So in addition to being in a career pathway, you can get a career diploma, which also fills up those IB courses. And I know Chris Morth is really very excited about helping to generate even more interest in that area, and it also coordinates with our career pathways.
Any questions?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
So career-related program, like, so what programs are these, as far as like, what careers?
All of our career pathways, you can get a career, this is with the International Baccalaureate, you can get a certificate of IBCP, which is Career Program, if, and all of our kids have to pick a career pathway, remember? So they're all doing that, anyway. So this is taking a few additional courses in IB, and then that generates a certificate, which also lends itself to, you know, college career readiness.
So I see nursing and culinary, as well as project leading the way?
Those are examples.
Is EMT part of that as well?
EMT is part of that, yep. Yep.
So let's expand the notes, too.
Yeah, I think, I think the narrative could, maybe just have a complete, a complete list of all the careers that would be covered. Thank you.
Okay. Next page.
This one is unclassified, and Lori went through this with me, so maybe she can help me with it. It looks like things that we really needed to put in a place, and I think there were some retiring, retirement salaries in, or retirement benefits in here, in the insurances.
Yeah, these are what I would call district-wide allocations, where they don't really attribute to a specific function code.
Right, right. And so you don't see any staffing related to it.
Substitute teachers.
You see some substitute teachers, but not in this bucket any longer, right? It was only for this year, but now it's going somewhere else. So it was reallocated. Even summer school had been there, but it's got its own place now. But I think where we, we were looking, Lori, was under the benefits section with the insurances. Was this the part retirement severances and that kind of thing? So this is really for our retirees, right? That's where that is, where we're affording the health insurance for them. And then there's one student intern, and I think it's for IT. And.
Wait, wait a second. If there's no staffing, what are we doing with Social Security and Workman's Comp and Medicare?
That's for retirement? Is that, or is that for the intern? Or what would that be for?
I'll double check what they've got allocated.
I'm going to guess it's for the substitute teacher. Well.
Yeah, but it's not any longer.
They're zeroed out.
The substitute teachers aren't here, and they weren't in the function.
They're in the elementary. Did we see them in the middle in high school? Not yet.
I've not seen, I don't recall.
Okay, we'll find them. I'm looking again.
I think substitute teachers were spread out across all the, I see some in math, I see some in music.
I know, but didn't they take them out there? Look at this.
Oh, right, yeah, okay.
They were in there, but I'm looking for the pocket where they are now.
Right, yeah.
I think they were reclassified.
That'd be important, no.
Yeah. Looks really weird.
There's some general classroom supplies in the budget in this, and some computer So this area has gone down 3%, or 64,000, but it does seem like it's a combination of a lot of different things.
Never. All right, go ahead, Adrian.
All right, so this is another example. The, the budget that the board passed for FY25 budget is 1,873,796, exactly $280,000 less than what it appears that the board has been operating under on this. So at the bottom line of FY25 budget, 2,153,796. So it's a very round number, if you subtract one for the other, from the other, of $280,000. And so I'm, am I to understand, Ray, from what you said before?
I think Ray.
Ray's left.
Oh, all right. But from what he said before, this is our actual, the budget that we're actually operating on is substantially different than what the board approved, and the town can't change any line items, right? They just threw one big line item at us, or didn't include it, they just cut it from their side, I guess.
Right. Somewhere between Dave and Ray, something happened, I'm surmising.
Well, I mean, however it happened, it was changed, and it wasn't the board that did the change. So it makes all of these numbers look different. So I, so it's not an actual 3% decrease, it's whatever, 289 minus 1873. So it's a, you know, a little over $200,000 increase, so a 10% increase, we would say, from the, from the budget that we approved. So I, I think we need to get this worked out, like, we need to understand why we're operating under, why we're operating under a different budget that we have. But these numbers, I mean, that was $100,000 in the other category, and 280 here, that's $380,000 that the board didn't approve that, like, we just seem to be operating in something that we don't understand. So I'll, again, you know, voice my frustration on that.
We need a business manager that will stay.
That would help.
More than one, three months.
Anything, Michael?
Yeah, so I'm following on on that, because I have the approved budget from our current year, too. And in that one, so here we start off with the substitute teachers, but in that one, the table has 101 and 111, and in the 101, there's a negative $280,000. And if you look in, with the corresponding FTE chart, has actually proposed negative two positions in here. I, I don't know how that got through, through the actual budget. I don't get how there would be a negative position allocation from one budget. But, but that's the $280,000. There's like negative $280,000 in this function code for 101. That's what happened last year, and if you put that back in, it would, it would work out, but I don't, I don't get that. I don't get, I can have negative people.
We don't have 101.
I know. That was in the FY25 budget, right? That's where you're pulling that from?
It's in the, the current year budget, not the one we're looking at.
That's the one that's published online.
What was 101? What was the line?
Well, it's negative 280,000, that's the difference.
What was it, like, substitute teachers?
Oh, 101 is certified teachers.
Oh, certified teachers, okay. Maybe we need a better explanation of this page, is that possible to get?
We will try.
I'm wondering what my colleagues would think about us asking Susan to task Ray to get to the bottom of this discrepancy of 280 plus whatever it is, $380,000. It's.
Yeah, that's what I.
We're not, we're not capable of answering that question.
Well, I can't do that tonight either, but we can, we can look into it.
Well, I would.
We'll come back to this page.
Okay. I hope we could ask you to task her, task him to do that ASAP, because we need to know this before we pass our budget.
I would say also that, like, I mean, it seems to me like there's been a number of times, like, where the FY25 numbers that are presented in this, in this package are not squaring up with that. They're significant in these amounts, but in other areas, there's also been some minor discrepancies. So maybe there's, like, we need to get some good understanding of, like, what the operating budget was for FY25. You know, we, and we know what we voted on, we know what we approved in that book that, you know, was a 7.91 increase.
I don't disagree with you in concept.
But what's showing up here?
Given the timeframe that we have, I think if we can identify, if we're able to identify $380,000, that we can put.
200.
Well, there's 100,000 and another.
100,000, 380,000. That'll buy some, that'll buy us some high density.
Fair enough. I mean, that's significant, yeah.
Go ahead, Michael.
Just to help concentrate the search, I went through the function codes we've reviewed, and the ones where I sourced this code 101, it's not up on our table, but this certified teachers, I guess. And I found discrepancies in 1101, Elementary Education, 1104, Language Arts, and then 1107, where that was kind of where we stopped and talked about it the first time, that was Tech Ed, and then now this 1119, unclassified. So it's 1101, 1104, 1107.
Are you on this page here?
Huh?
He's found the same idea in these.
Like, everything we've gone.
So I can bring that to Ray and see if he can make sense of that.
Okay.
And to be clear, that's a discrepancy between what, what's in this spreadsheet or that spreadsheet for FY25 budget, this gray column, and what's in the approved budget that we're working on, the document. Maybe it averages out, I don't know.
Get back to us on that. Lori, go ahead.
Can I share one thing? I think, I think there's a couple of things going on. I think we've had three different business managers.
In 12.
Processed, handled the same budget, and probably reclassified things differently one year over the next. I know that's definitely happening here. And then I think it's also the process in which the budget is finalized at the town, and then those cuts have to be rolled back in. And I think it's identifying what line items were adjusted. So I think there's a couple of things that are.
But the bottom line number is still the same.
Bottom line, right, is the same, but it's how they process the actual allocation. So I think there's a couple of things going on.
Okay. Thank you, Lori.
And then with this one, are we comfortable with no, no people but insurance?
No, the insurance was for the retirees, right? Lori?
We'll double check.
Okay.
And the Workman's Comp and Social Security, so.
I'm not completely familiar in how they classify everything here, so I'd rather check.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, I put down, please review this page. Okay.
Yeah. Just making.
Go ahead.
Just making comment, because this is like a fertile ground for, like, reducing, right? Like, if general classroom supplies can identify it to a school or a principal or someone, like, okay, there's 75,000 that we can get, like a pair or some, or a couple pair, you know what I mean?
So which line are you looking at?
601.
On which page?
On the other page.
On that same, on that same page. I hadn't turned the page yet, you know what I mean? So that's like right there, at least you know what the student intern is. Repair of equipment, well, if it's unclassified, unknown, like, it's probably an unknown equipment too, so that can go. So now I'm like up 78,000 that I can use for like a, a teacher, you know, and now I can get a teacher. So let's try to identify it, otherwise it's going to be like cut or reallocated.
Right, this would be another.
We'll get back to that page, okay?
All right. So, yeah, that 601 would be a good opportunity for a drop-down, another additional drop-down of what's, what's targeted.
Next one, 542, 543.
Business Education. We have two teachers at Fitch High School, and we have a 6.4% decrease for that department, or $16,000, 16,740. And we had a decrease in salaries because we have one less. And no longer charging for substitutes, and then you see the insurance. Now, the insurance seems to be up, which is confusing, at 18.2%, but it's actually.
We'll double check the formula. We'll get, we'll get exact clarification on the weighted formula that they're using by the benefits. I believe there's a formula that goes across all line items.
This is a case where the adopted budget and the actual. This is a case where the adopted budget and the actual should be the same. So instead of three and two, that three is an old number. And so it's two and two. So basically, it's flat across the board, just two. Adopted, actual, proposed. There's a three there, but that's because it's from '23, '24.
Yeah, well, see how it says FY '24? I'm wondering if it should have been FY '24 and then FY '25 over on top of the actuals.
I think that whole first column is just old. And it's just 2, 2, 2.
Okay.
And 2, 2, 2, 0.
Okay.
Let her finish the page.
Oh, sorry.
So there's also field trips for 500, professional materials for 500, and some dues for 350.
Go ahead, Jay.
Didn't you say it was a recent requirement that all students get like a financial class? Wouldn't it fall under this? And does it make sense that we're one teacher less?
I think that was one of Matt's recommendations is to add another business teacher, so you're going to see that.
Okay, so plus, okay.
And it's not actually a cut.
Oh, yes, that's right, sorry. Yeah, that's right.
But we might need more because of that.
Yeah.
Financial literacy, right?
Financial literacy for all. They have to take it sometime between ninth and 12th grade.
We'll make them do the budget.
We were actually in there and that's what they were doing, their own personal budgets. It was fun.
I was watching a show this afternoon, real quick when I was eating my lunch. And it was a sports guy. He's a football player. He got out of a car, they were showing him getting out of his car. And he got out a Honda, a Honda. So the analyst said, oh, he must have taken financial literacy. He's not spending his money on a Maserati because they have the money. He's got a little Honda here.
And this is a program, the 1124 Health Occupations. We do have this amazing nurse teacher. And she has grown this program. It's been just so exciting. We've got it connected with EMT. We've got students going out into the field at the end of the school day and into the afternoon. And a lot of teachers getting certified. So it's very, very great work. And it's one of our very popular career pathways that is getting more popular each year. So the actual expenditures are down 17.9% or $17,965. Certified teacher salary is there and it has increased. You see the insurance that goes along with that. You see travel for field trips and 1,500 is pretty good because they do go out to the field, I think, once or twice a week to do that work. And then some general supplies, some pupil tests in order to get their certification. And we have, I think that's it.
Well, what happened to the 201? Why is that a zero there in the group insurance? She's not taking, or he, she, they're not taking insurance?
Could be, maybe the husband has it or something.
Any question?
Oh, this is the program that has a partnership with the hospitals and the EMTs. And the classroom looks like a clinical setting in the midst of a high school.
Congressman Courtney came to visit us last year to see it. Really impressive, yeah. Now, I'm just looking at the time and I know I have Laurie and Sam here. We really have completed the secondary. So, you know, I don't know how much more time you wanted to spend or can spend.
Well, what's next? Sam's?
There's quite a few, I think there's a few pages. And then Laurie's been sitting here, but I'd like her to get home. You're okay?
You go in order.
What's Laurie's pages?
We have another 25, 30 pages.
No, it's in the
But we're skipping through Special Ed, right?
Yeah, I guess not. And I don't think that
We didn't finish Special Ed, we're going to go back and
And I don't think Clint is here, so I'm not worried about doing his tonight.
Okay.
So Sam, let's see what your numbers are here.
So Laurie's all done?
Laurie, are you all done then?
I'm scrolling through.
Okay.
Right now, I'm going to miss the excitement.
Sam, you're doing CIPs?
Although we've done CIPs.
Before.
A lot. I think we've done CIPs, but
What function's the new truck? I don't know which
Do we ever find your new truck?
It's in there.
Yeah.
Well, where are the CIPs in this budget? In the back or is there a separate sheet?
It's actually in the front of the book. And it was just that one page. I don't even know if we have it to display, so I'd rather skip that.
Thank you.
The CIPs, because we've gone over it so many times, I feel. Haven't we, Dean?
Did you make Sam sit here and no CIPs?
But there's more to Sam than that. There's his whole operation budget, operation and maintenance.
All right, go ahead, Sam.
And then there's It's like There's Laurie's human resource.
So 2510's operation maintenance function.
2510?
No, no, but Susan, CIP, Sam was going to add, and John was willing.
Did we add that yet?
The cameras and additional safety stuff.
I think they've been working on that.
Oh, Zach, Clint, not yours, okay.
So I found one, 2510, operation maintenance. That's page 107.
Yeah, 106, 107. It's at the back.
Did you get a new book, too?
Yeah, but my numbers haven't matched up with your numbers tonight, so.
Okay, so I'll help you.
Joyce just sent this to me today.
I'll go through it and then you can kind of explain.
Oh, I'm on 2510, yeah. I want to make sure you're good before I go, so. Are you all set?
Yeah.
Is she all set?
Yeah.
Do you want to do your HR page?
Oh, I can.
Okay. We can do that first and then I can get you on the road.
What page is that, Laurie?
I'm looking.
5100.
5100, okay.
We used to be together. We were like a pair. We were a team. The superintendent's budget was with the HR budget and we've gotten, now I have my own page with me and Ann Marie.
Where are we going?
And then she has her own page with her department team.
Ah.
Yeah.
And you got business office. Okay, Laurie, you all set?
Sure, so
Everybody has the page, it's 5100 and 5-101.
So no changes in the FTEs in the staffing levels that we projected. We've been at this level previously. So no changes from FY '25 to FY '26. Expense wise, we have obviously the salaries, some, obviously, the contractual benefits. I'll point out, there's a few, aside from the salaries and benefits, there are a few line items that we projected an increase and I'll just explain why with the advertising. Advertising have previously been funded through things like alliance funding, alliance money, which we currently are not anticipating having. So we put that back in. So that is $10,000. So we can do basically recruitment advertising all throughout the year through various platforms. Minority recruitment advertising. This is the two teacher and residence candidates that we are billed for from the TRP program. So that is charged under minority recruitment advertising. There's a small amount of various, you know, travel for various conferences throughout the course of the year for the staff, some general supplies. And then I'm just taking a look. Included in these line items are also additional items such as if we have obligation to pay certain expenses and these things like background checks. Those are included in these supply line items.
Why did you keep the FY '25 budget line zero?
Because she used to be with me.
Because I used to be locked in with the superintendent. So you're going to see reductions in the superintendent's function.
Ah, okay.
And this one says zero because they created a new function this year.
Okay. We tried to make it clear. I know it doesn't clear as mud sometimes, but we tried to break things out so that you could see a department by department.
Could we put something in the budget narrative that explains that?
We could, yes.
I think that would be
I thought, isn't already there that you were?
There's a narrative, but it doesn't explain that it's been split off from the superintendent. I'll have them add a note on that page.
And you said advertising used to be in, come from alliance?
It used to come from an alliance grant.
Oh, alliance.
Alliance funding for several years. So we had it in the budget many years ago, funded it through grant funding, and now that funding is no longer available. So we had to put it back in.
Adrian?
Yeah, is there any way that you could give us approximates of changes? So, you know, if we were just to go to advertising, you have $10,000. We don't know. If you spent $1,000 last year and now you're spending $10,000 this year, it would be nice for me, anyway, to know, you know, this is how much we've been spending every year about. I mean, obviously, if you're kind of in with the superintendent, it's going to be hard to do some of that. But some of it, maybe you can give us, you know, just write approximate or estimate or something. Just so we know, you know, if, you know, like whatever line item, you know, if it's a big increase or a big decrease, we can understand the changes.
Yeah, yeah, we have that when we built the number up, so we can definitely provide that.
Any other questions?
Okay, Laurie, get safe and sound. And Sam?
Comments, anything else for Laurie? Thank you, Laurie.
You're welcome. And can I just say this out loud? Because Laurie has been instrumental in getting you this budget. Laurie has been right by the side of this new young man who is wonderful and sharp and he's got a degree in finance. And he took a budget that was really not prepared as well as we had imagined it should be. And the two of them, it was their hard work and this staff, this whole central office staff that came together knowing we had a deadline. And that's the way Groton operates. That's what I'm so proud to serve here, is that people really go beyond and stayed late. And I just couldn't have done it without her. And my whole central office team, really. Thank you, Laurie.
You're welcome.
We appreciate you.
Now get out.
I got to close everything.
All right, we're going to do Sam?
Sam.
All right, Sam.
Why not? And if I could just add
This is 5106.
One comment regarding Peter in the business office.
Yes, oh, yes. This is a great story.
You should really thank me because I hired him and I
Yes, you're right, Sam. He was promoted from Sam's department. He's been doing a fabulous job.
He was hardworking there, too, though, wasn't he?
He was.
He's a great worker.
A great worker, yeah.
All right, thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Have a good night and a safe trip home.
We actually told him he needs to go, he wants to go back for his master's. And I said, you might want to be, you know, a business manager or something. We could grow our own.
Can you go on the fast track? All right, Sam, go ahead.
Okay, so starting right up top with administration, there's a reduction of $37,000, which is, I'm glad to say that there's a reduction there rather than the $50,000 that somebody said I got.
We reallocated, we put that in the right place this time.
Thank God.
Yeah, custodial is down also because of reduction. We went back to pre-COVID numbers on the custodial persons that we have.
Maintenance?
Maintenance, again, we had a reduction of one and a half persons there. Again, part timers, we have less part timers because of the reduction in COVID numbers that we had previously. Clerical's the same. Overtime, again, this was a trend. That's why we have that reduction in the custodial overtime. And maintenance overtime.
That's a big reduction.
That is a big reduction.
It is.
He watches over things.
Yeah.
We keep a pretty close eye on that. So the insurances, again, are all given to me by the business office and you see some reductions in that area as well.
Yeah, so it looks like he's decreased his total salary and wages by 8.5% or $285,413. And then the benefits also reduced down to 401,634 at 33.3% reduction.
And so this is the first page that actually matched up with the same numbers that I had, the same numbers that you have for some reason.
I don't know.
Which is fine. Professional services are up a bit. As we, as these newer schools come online, we're finding things that we need to call in some some of the original contractors to come back and help us with some of those things.
Any of that HVAC work happening in this area?
And, of course, the state required testing of the HVAC as well as included in here.
So that's one of those unfunded mandates that we know and love.
Yep. Water, sewer, garbage, those are all increases based on the contractors that do those and the town that's charging us for that. So those numbers are pretty steady. Snow removal, I don't know why that says 0% increase.
Because it was $50,000 and 25 and $50,000 and 20
Did you come in under budget last year? You budgeted 50. How did it actually go with the light winter?
Well, that's this year. We have only had one snow day, or not even a snow day. That's for this year, the 50,000.
Yeah, well, it isn't just snow, it's also salt. And I don't
Yeah, ice, ice is
We have been out this year almost as many days as last year total, spreading salt and sand on the sidewalks. Because as it rains and freezes overnight, we have to get out pretty early to get that stuff done, too.
And that's every entrance and every walkway.
Right.
And those walkways and, you know, the high school and the middle school. Oh, my goodness.
Again, repair of equipment. We're finding that as these buildings are getting a little bit older, even though we have a pretty good maintenance program on that, we're finding a little bit of an increase in that area as well as repairs to grounds. Little reduction in painting. Again, that was a trend. Although I think in the next couple of years, we're probably going to have to increase that. As you know, that the new schools, when we built the new schools, they're not built like old schools. They actually use a lot of sheet rock in our new elementary schools and
And even at the middle school.
They get banged up pretty good after, and the middle school, they get banged up, sheet rock gets banged up. I don't care how hard it is.
Like this good old cinder block we got here.
Kid proof.
It is. It is. Our teachers painted this probably, what, about seven years ago, eight years ago? And look, it still looks fabulous.
Electrical repairs, again, this is based on a trend. Things have been going up, again, increasing there. Rentals, there would be things, other rentals would be lifts, for instance, to go up and change lighting at the football field or, or pieces of equipment like that. Our exterminating service, they have gone up again as well. Building protection. Again, this is a trend that the business manager and I worked on. This is the number that we came up with there, so that again is increased. And of course, the other purchase services are up a bit as well. And again, those, as, as the buildings are aging, we need to increase that a bit. So we're up, I think, like 21% in that area. Liability insurance, all those, postage, et cetera.
Are on the next page.
All those numbers are pretty steady.
Well, wait, wait. Let's go back to the previous page. Any questions on page 107?
You have a-
Mike?
Yeah, so 331, professional services, did you, I, I missed that part. That, that's up quite a bit. I was wondering what that includes.
And he said HVAC.
Oh, that was the HVAC testing?
Yeah, he said HVAC testing.
Yeah, HVAC testing, that sort of stuff going on, state required testing, et cetera.
And then for 431, that, that's up too, but I, what is a repair to grounds? When I think of that, I think of like fencing, grass, things like that, but it must be inclusive of anything that's not in the school.
There's a lot of stuff in there, and I'll, I'll have to get you a list of those because I, I couldn't rattle them off tonight.
But, but it's, it's more than just-
Oh, yeah, it's not-
Repairing grass or things like that or fences. Yeah, it's quite a bit. So it's basically most things outside of the school, I think. And then the other one is the rentals. You explained it, but why is it kinda tripled from last year?
What are we renting? Is that like porta potties?
Well, there are porta potties for the fields, which have increased over the last couple of years down at the football field, et cetera, and over to Mystic River. Now, that field is used by our athletic teams offsite. But it's also includes other equipment that we have to rent, either to repair equipment, it might be a lift, a sky lift to get to the lights, or even a lift to heavy, a large piece of equipment that we don't, that we don't have that type of lift for, so.
Gotcha. Because it looks like FY '24, the first column, it was, I can't find it right now, it was like 12,000 or so.
And then it dipped.
And then it dips down, that looks like it was probably subjected to a cut at the-
That's it, you got it.
Superintendent or board level. And now it's up higher than that before, so I'm wondering if it's sort of underfunded this year. Like, did we go past our-
Yes, it was underfunded this year.
Our six or 7,000 for rentals.
Okay, so I'm still on the same page, but you went to a second page?
No, let's go on 5107.
441, rentals.
It's like 12, down to 6.7, up to 8, 18.6. I have a feeling if we wanna get-
I gotta look at that a little more closely, so I'll make a note of that to, to get back to you on that a little more closely.
And I know 10,000 seems small in terms of the whole budget, but I feel like if we're gonna make cuts with that-
Yeah, I got it.
It's a big jump.
Yeah, it's not, um-
And then the last one was the other purchase services. I, I know it's a trend, but what does that include again? The 499. It looks like basically it was, it's still lower than it was two years ago, so it looks like it may have been cut last year and then brought back up, but I was wondering what's, what's included in that.
I'll get you a list of those as well.
And it can be general, it doesn't have to be inclusive.
Yep, I'll get those for you.
And Sam, I appreciate that the custodial overtime went down, but the maintenance overtime went up. Can you explain why that happened?
The maintenance, the maintenance guys are the ones that actually come in and do all of the salting and sanding early, early in the morning, so. And custodial is basically, overtime for custodial is basically weekends for activities in the buildings. It's pretty steady, but expected to be down a little bit this year.
And they also fix boilers when we need them to, maintenance.
Oh, yeah.
And we've had quite a few boilers go down.
Jen, you have a question?
Yes, it's on the staffing section, Sam. District-wide custodial, are those individuals at Mary Morrison?
What's, I'm sorry.
Custodials.
What number are you on?
District-wide?
District-wide, FTEs. It's like you have 1.5.
What line are you on, please?
It's not a line, it's like on the staffing, it's like 5106.
Yeah.
It's on your staffing line, page.
Custodial district?
Oh, up, up above, on the page above.
Yep.
Are you under custodial or me?
Custodial.
Custodial.
Well, either or, yeah, I just need to understand district.
Yeah, we had a reduction in maintenance staff.
Oh, no, no, I just wanna know what, where are they? Is that Mary Morrison, or do they just like-
We have a, yeah, we have a part timer at Mary Morrison, so.
And then do, is this sort of like your substitute? So if there's somebody out, they're the ones you go in?
We have one at central office too, right?
We, we have one additional here at, at the central office and also Mary Morrison.
Okay, thank you.
I should mention again that that, that first column of numbers is, is old, so it's, it's really just 12.0 from the current budget to the 11.5, which we're looking at now. That, that first, don't trust that first column of numbers on any page.
Don't trust the adopted column.
Yeah, on, on any page, just for the FTE charts.
Okay.
District-wide for maintenance, Jen, all of our maintenance are district-wide, so they don't have a school necessarily that they're, they, they're, they're-
Yeah, they're not assigned to the school. Their, their, their office spaces, we meet here and then they're dispersed throughout the district.
Where they're needed.
On a needs basis.
Yeah.
Any other questions on this page? Okay, Sam. 109.
Don't you love those pages?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have the page number, so.
Oh.
It says, you would do it going there before.
I think I have some stuff that's on, on, on the bottom.
Joyce will get you one tomorrow, you come see us.
She gave it to me this mo, this is, she just gave it to me this afternoon, so.
You got it up there, Sam.
It starts with liability insurance? I can't see that, I stepped on my glasses today.
All right, you must be Kins and Matthew.
They, they fell off when I was coming down the ladder.
I'm not talking.
That's expensive, that liability insurance.
$611.
I know.
Was that the number that went up partially because the town is not contributing as much?
Yeah.
Yep.
You're exactly right.
Postage is about the same, transportation remains the same. That's my travel pay, actually, to 78, throughout the district and to conferences and to the Buildings and Grounds Association, et cetera. And then, I think there was one other item here I wanted to point out on that page, oh, food supplies.
Do we ever expect to see a decrease in electricity?
Wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah, maybe.
That's what it's projected to be, yes.
I know Ray keeps talking about trying to work out some kind of efficiency with the electric company. So there is motion to do that. He's contacted people to get a quote.
And we all know the fuel, whether it's oil or propane, et cetera, have gone up. Natural gas, et cetera.
Your supplies went up too, though, 68,000.
Have we tried drilling for oil here?
Why is the big increase in supply, Sam?
Because the previous year, we were able to buy supplies at the end of the year before the, the new year started, so that we were able to keep that lower the year before.
Which line are you looking at, Beverly?
I'm, I'm on painting supply. Well, I think she was just talking about 652.
Or 658 custodial supplies.
I saw about 658, Sam.
Yeah, we're, 658 and 652 are in the same realm. We were able to carry some over from previous. Safety pla, supplies.
Well, it actually looks like our supplies didn't really go up. They're more related to what was actually spent in '24. It looks like we took a dip. This is one of those, probably due to having to cut the budget and make sure we can make ends meet. You know, we lessened it, so he's gotta live with less this year. And then we've put him back to what he had.
Didn't buy it that year and bought it in the beginning of the next year.
Any questions for Sam on this page?
Yes.
Eight. You do, Jen?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering, is that 75,000, the truck that we've been looking for?
Where did you find it?
731.
Replacement of non-instructional-
It's like maybe fourth or fifth in the car.
There it is, that has to be the truck.
Is that it?
I'm sorry, what line did you say it's on?
731.
75,000?
Oh, there it is, right there, yeah.
I missed the truck. Thank you, Jen. Sam's truck.
Adrian?
That's a replace, that's a replacement of a truck that was damaged.
And we, we did take the-
Total, actually.
Insurance benefit, though, to help us out last year.
Yeah, I think they gave us like 25,000 for the damaged truck.
Didn't we get a lot for scrap on that truck, too? I thought it sold for, oh, maybe I'm thinking the insurance number.
Yeah, no, we got 25, I think it was around 25 for the truck.
25,000?
Yes.
Yeah, which is pretty good for a total truck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we need that truck?
The plow is not used either.
Yeah, it's got a plow.
Well, that included the plow.
It happened during a snow storm, yeah. But we're down a, a snow plow.
Yeah, a light post.
And a light post.
Light post still crooked?
Yes.
Yeah.
And a retired customer.
We have to, we have to-
I was wondering.
We'll have to do it during the summer.
That's not a high priority. Still shines down a little less.
It, it's working right now.
This one, I comment, again, Sam, I'll have to congratulate you because you beat the two, you were less than 2% because this one, again, the bottom line number from last year's budget was 82,52, 372, not 81,99. So I don't know where the difference is, but it was 52,780.
So 2.3 is not accurate, then? That's what I had, but.
I have 2.3.
No, it's, well, from what we approved, what the board voted on was 8.252, 372.
Okay.
And you, and in here, you have 8, 199, 572, so.
Someone cut your budget.
Somehow the budget got adjusted.
And I don't know who it was.
It was 52,780 difference.
So I, I, I think that's line 633, fuel, oil. In, in this worksheet, it's got 190,000, just even. And then the other one is something bigger. Maybe 242,780, I think, but I don't know if I got that line right. Yeah. So it's up by like, you know, like 52,780.
What line item are you on?
Oh, it was reduced by, right?
Yeah, yeah, so 633 is fuel, oil. If you go in that gray column, it's 190,000.
Right.
In the appro, the adopted budget, if I, if I've got the right line, it's 242, 780. So, so the adopted budget was higher than what's in here.
For fuel, oil?
Yeah, and that's like, what, 52,000 or-
Yeah.
Or so. I don't know if there are any others, though, I was kinda going through that. That's probably it, though.
Yeah, that's, well, it's pretty close to the amount, anyway.
Yep.
So how would an individual line item like that change?
I don't know. I said, I guess I have to ask a couple people prior. To find the right person if they remember.
Any other questions or comments? None?
Are you done?
I don't know.
Oh, I guess maybe 658 custodial supplies, that was up a lot. Maybe you said it, you know. It was cut the year before, though, so.
It was cut and-
And so now it's kinda, it's just restored, really, it seems.
Are you explaining why it's-
Yeah, yeah, I just saw it. It was, it was a, two years ago, it was 173,000, then it went down last year in the budget to 106, and now it's back up to essentially the same thing it was before.
Yeah, we have a lot of that going on, for sure. Yeah.
Are you still, you're talking about the fuel, oil?
Uh, no, this is 658 custodial supplies. It was a, a biggie, a big change.
Yeah, it was a big change.
But not really, because it's probably getting back to what we actually spent the year before.
Right, yeah.
So in FY '25, Michael, it was 106?
That's this year.
Which, which one, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, that's it.
658 we're still looking at.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, what else?
106, 150.
Yeah, correct.
All right, any questions about this page? Okay, that's it.
915, yeah.
That's it.
Thank you. We did a lot, we got a lot accomplished.
How about transportation?
Yeah, transportation.
It's a small one.
Is that you, Sam, transportation?
I said you don't need to come back.
Yeah. All right, Sam, transportation.
Right, so again, the clerical for transportation are the two coordinators that we have here at the central office. And the bus aides, you can see those change as the needs change, as kids come and go in and out of the district, so. Adopted eight and a half and proposed 13.5 right now. A small increase in the administration there. Bus aides, again, increased by 23 when we went up in-
Did they get a raise?
With those numbers?
Yeah, they, because remember, we had the-
They, they went, yeah, there was some that-
The January date.
The required increase in minimum wage. So as far as overtime, tried to limit that. However, we try to keep one of our coordinators here until all buses are home and, and cleared in case there's anything that we need to resolve. So there's a, a small amount in the overtime.
Yeah, but the year before was only $5,000. And then in FY '25, it's only 5,000, and then you jumped up to 13,000.
Yeah, we had one, one of the aides that was out sick for a long time. The other person had to cover all those hours that added up, so we wanna make sure we cover that. See the other re, oh, there's a lot of parentheses here, which is always a good thing, right?
We like the parentheses.
Yeah. So the contract, as you know, it was, it was loaded upfront, and as we go into the last couple of years, it's a-
It's better.
3%, 3.5% in the last couple of years.
Now, that's a big decrease in the special ed transportation. Real big decrease.
That's it.
Michael?
One quick point, the, that FYE, you know, the function, the FYE, FTE chart, really, it's the approved was 11.5 school buses, and so going up to 13.5, we're up too, so that, that probably, I don't know if it explains the increase or not, but, but that's there. And then I just have a question with 512, special education, transportation, other. It's a, it's a big number, but what is other if it's contracted? Is that just as it occurs?
That would be-
Curtain and all the companies.
Those would be the cat, personal transportation, essentially, through Curtain or one of those firms that provide us with that.
Oh, so contracted is with-
We have, yeah, STA is the busing. And then we use Curtain for a lot of the special needs, or sometimes when some of the kids come here from high school for tutoring or something, if it's required.
Well, or if they're out, out placed and out of district and you have to take one or two kids farther away, you know, so the smaller. And so for some-
Yeah, they have cars.
Cars, yeah. They have cars.
We have kids that go to the other end of the state.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they, they use a Curtain cab.
So is that, so there's no contract with Curtain, for instance, or, like, why do we have contract for the buses versus, versus not, not with Curtain?
I don't know why. That's, that's the way it was when I got here, so, so we, we-
It's kind of as need basis, you don't have it, you know, you have it as you need it, so you move things around.
There are about three companies, so we, we check all three companies before we actually assign it, so. Mercy, Curtain, I can't remember the third one.
Curtain's probably the largest.
Yeah.
Curtain, Curtain is available. The other companies aren't local, so makes it a little bit more difficult, but.
So then, so then a bidding process might not, not be advantageous if there's-
Not necessarily.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, it's not that many companies.
No. Most of them are down Hartford Way, Merritt, and so on and so forth.
Yeah. Yeah.
But all in all, we're down a little bit for transportation.
Any other questions?
Again, the number, the fuel oil number got changed by about $110,000, so this line item was approved at 7.7 million, 7.752, 254.
So, that number dropped?
Yeah.
What was it originally approved for this year?
So, the fuel oil that we actually approved in the budget was 387,500, and it seems to have been changed to 278,151. I'd be curious to know if that is, was happening in prior years, too.
Which code is that?
No doubt.
634.
634.
That's just kind of...
634?
I'll have to look into the budgets and see.
Okay. Oh, for buses, for the buses.
Yeah, it's fuel for the buses at the bus garage.
Any other comments, questions for Sam? All right, well, thank you, Sam.
You're welcome.
And I think that's all we have for tonight.
Yeah, that's good, good work.
All right, so what do we have coming up next? Oh, Jen, go ahead.
Are we in? I was, I didn't see anything for nurses in here, so I just wanted to make sure.
We haven't gotten there yet. It's here.
It is.
What function is that going to be under?
And then, the substitute.
Top question.
That line.
Done for tonight.
We still have technology, and we have town obligations and health insurance.
Yeah, we'll just keep rolling through it, yeah.
The Board of Ed, I see, is spending a lot more money for some reason.
Yeah, we got to look at the...
It's not meals.
Kind of curious how that works, but...
It's not meals.
Could be the lawyer.
It's contingency.
So, our next budget meeting is one Tuesday.
Oh, so they're going to blame it on us.
We're going to use it for, like, maybe teachers.
So, our next budget meeting, I'm thinking is Tuesday, because Monday is a regular Board of Ed meeting.
I just want to do a quickie, regular...
Huh?
I just want to do a quickie, regular meeting, and then have a...
And have a budget set. What's on the agenda for Monday?
We should be able to run through, like, a...
A policy?
Like 15 policies, pretty quick, right?
How many policies?
As many as we can get through tomorrow.
770, something like that.
How many is on there, agenda?
It looks like health services, 2130, I just found it. 2130, if you wanted to know the nurses.
2130, okay.
I think, although that's with, that seems awfully high. Health services, K through 12.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure they were in.
Okay.
Do you know where we would find the substitutes, Susan?
I think, I think they're buried in secondary. I have to look for them in secondary somewhere.
Okay, we'll be back, we'll be back in a few seconds.
We just want to make sure they are somewhere.
Yeah.
All right, any...
I think Andrea has a question.
Any other comments or concerns?
She's going to be powder dry.
Before we adjourn?
I do, just a quick, just checking in, I mean, overall, on the pace that we're making, do we look like we're good for the February 3rd as the pivot date?
I don't know.
No?
Let's just, let's just keep moving along.
We're just keep moving. I think we're doing well.
Okay.
Yeah, I think about past June. We're going into good figures. And you're asking good questions, so...
Okay, Andrea, you're on.